Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The Attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calphi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calphi cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calphinesurance.com.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dogs and Hogs, 781 Main Street, ample parking in the back by our fence.
Lisa Peterson Aysendorf, William Rabus Real Estate Mortgage Insurance. Grossi Septic Solutions.
Turning Point Dance Studio.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, Sotheby's International Realty.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsOfNopska.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000.
Wacoit Congregational Church.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffney Builders.
Danny's Barber Shop.
David Rogers Electric. 508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Ed Steve's Pizzeria and More.
Additional support provided by... Roach Brothers. Windfall. Shaw's Supermarket. Stop &amp; Shop.
Okay, all town meeting members, please make sure you've checked in and you have your electronic voting device. All non-town meeting members, if you are not an elected town meeting member, you should be up in the balcony. And we have microphones, a microphone up there, so if you're in the balcony, just stand up, walk over to the microphone, and I'll put you on our speakers list. Could we... For our quorum, IT, could we put a five-minute quorum? We're gonna open up the quorum call to all town meeting members present, please come forward, take your seat. Make sure you have your electronic voting device. Again, our roster is now in alphabetical order, it's not by precinct. Make it a little bit easier to find your names up there. It's just by alphabetical order, all town meeting members present, please press 1A. 1A for the establishment of a quorum.
You just stand up when we get to that article. Okay, all town meeting members present, please press 1A for the establishment of a quorum. Again, just want to remind all non-town meeting members, if you're not elected as a town meeting member, you should be in the balcony. We do have a microphone in the balcony. When you'd like to speak, if you just stand up, walk over to the microphone, I'll add you to my list, and then you can sit until we get to you. Want to remind all town meeting members to identify yourself by name and precinct each time you speak. Okay, by a counted vote of 177, we have a quorum, and I call the annual town meeting back into session. All members present, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I present allegiance... ...to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on our nation under God, in the physical, the liberatory, and justice for all.
This time I'll call up Dr. Intenduci for our invocation.
Let us pray. Lloyd, when it comes to meeting and communicating with each other, help us to be good listeners. Help us to be open-minded, putting aside our own agendas. Help us to be honest without being insensitive. Help us to be respectful without being too formal or artificial. Help us to question and to challenge without being harsh. Help us to be aware that this is just one moment, just one meeting. And lastly, help us to remember that you too are always meeting and communicating with us. Amen.
Before we begin, I have a few announcements. One, from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. The business owners and residents wishing to drop off recyclables at the Thomas Landers Road Waste Management Facility can either, you have an annual facility sticker affixed to the vehicle, or purchase a $10 daily sticker at the gate. In addition, there'll be a charge of $2.50 for each 32-gallon container quantity. And additional information about the recycling, which we have back at the dump at the waste management facility, is on the town website, but the committee did not mention that last night and wanted to let folks know that might not be aware that we do have that option back at the facility. March 13th, 1973. Do you all remember where you were on March 13th, 1973? I don't, I wasn't born yet, but... Andy! Do you remember March 13th, 1973? What happened on that day, Andy? He doesn't remember exactly, but that's the day that Andy de Baba Dufrane was elected to the Falmouth Town Meeting. And this meeting is his 50th year as a member of this august legislative body. So Andy didn't just start at town meeting, Andy started on the Beach Committee, working in the beaches. He was a selectman here in Falmouth. And for me personally, since I was born, he's been my barber, and my friend, and my teller on the floor of town meeting. And so Andy, tonight, we would like to recognize your 50 years of service. Jason, could you come up as well? And Andy's service is not only to our town, but to our country as a naval veteran, so Andy, thank you for that service as well. But tonight, Representative Fernandez and myself would like to recognize you on behalf of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, and be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Adrian, CJ, Andy, Dufrane, in recognition of your 50 years of service as an elected Falmouth Town Meeting member. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given the 11th day of April, 2023, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, your client, Dave Viera, and Representative Dylan Fernandez, who will be joining us later this evening. Andy, congratulations. And I forgot to mention, he was also on the Finance Committee. On behalf of Senator Moran, Jason Cullinan.
Hello, Andy. Good, Andy has also cut my hair. So I am fortunate to act on behalf of Senator Moran, who could not be here tonight and sends her regrets. And I'm able to present this official citation from the State Senate. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Andy Dufrane in recognition of your 50 years of service to Falmouth as town meeting member and selectman, also your enduring commitment to country in the United States Navy, and your skilled scissors and sage advice making you everyone's favorite barber.
Thank you, thank you, thank you! To all my colleagues here in this room, thank you for this honor that you've placed on me tonight. It's been a long... 50 years, and we've accomplished a hell of a lot, but let's watch what we're doing from now on.
As I was walking through the auditorium before the meeting, a few folks mentioned that, "Who's the new Finance Director?" And I went, "Oh, my bad, I didn't recognize and introduce our new Finance Director." After, you know, getting ready for town meeting and working with them, I figured, you know, everybody knows everybody, but that's not necessarily the case, so, tonight. Ed Centejo is our new Finance Director, welcome aboard. And our fairly new Town Council, for those that might not know, because some folks asked me about that as well, is Maura O'Keefe, our Town Council. Okay, last night, we ended with Article 18. Article 18 is to amend the town bylaw to insert a plastic reduction section. Chair, recognize the Select Board for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18 as printed.
Article 18 as printed. Mr. Gasson.
Am I good? Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and for those involved in the discussion surrounding this. I feel privileged to be a part of an environmentally-focused community, and to be able to stand here as a citizen and bring forward this plastic reduction initiative. Over the last several weeks, through many conversations and perspectives, I've had the chance to listen. To listen to the concerns of plastic-using business owners, to listen to the success stories of plastic-free businesses, and to listen to stories of attempts at voluntary transitions towards plastic-free operations. And through that journey, it's become abundantly clear. This is not a debatable issue. Change is possible, and change needs to happen. We need to step away from our normalization of the use of single-use plastic items. We need to step away from our normalization of the use of single-use plastic items, and this article is an effective and reasonable way of creating that behavioral change. We live in a world full of plastic, yet our dependence on it is dangerous, and our dependence on it, in many cases, is unnecessary. Of all the plastic ever created, estimates are that 9% has been recycled, 12% has been incinerated, and 79% has been landfillled or littered. And that plastic has not gone away. It can't be broken down by nature. It'll only break into smaller pieces called microplastics, and this is most evident when we look at our oceans. There are five garbage patches all across the oceans in the world. The largest one is the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, which lies between California and Hawaii. It's three times the size of France, and contains an estimated 1.4 billion pieces of floating plastic. That plastic is responsible for killing millions of animals every single year. And those 1.4 billion pieces of plastic are just what's collected on the surface. It's estimated that it's 10 times that amount on the ocean floor. By 2050, it's projected that the mass of plastic will be more than the mass of fish in the sea. By 2050, based on the current trends, there will be more plastic in the ocean than there are fish in the sea. A study published in the journal Nature and Sustainability analyzed 12 million pieces of litter collected from oceans, rivers, shorelines, the seafloor, open waters, and researchers found that 80% of the litter collected was plastic, and nearly half, 44%, of that plastic found, was related to takeout materials. Plastic production has an impact on our health. Their petroleum-based products, manufacturing them creates greenhouse gases, which are expected to exceed the emissions of the coal industry by 2030. Just seven years from now, based on our current trends, plastic production will exceed the emissions of coal. The picture on the screen over here is protesters living in Cancer Alley, Louisiana. It's a stretch of land that is home to numerous petrochemical plants, and these citizens over here, this past month, from this parish of St. James, Louisiana, have filed a federal lawsuit accusing law governments and governmental officials of violations, because these government officials repeatedly approved the construction of these petrochemical plants that produce our plastic. Harvard Health Studies, as well as other researchers around the world, have found that certain chemicals in plastic leach out of the plastic and into the food and beverages that we eat. These chemicals have been proven to disrupt our endocrine systems, and they have been linked to health problems such as autoimmune disease, obesity, cardiovascular disease, and reproductive problems, among others. The leaching can occur to a greater degree in plastic that's exposed to heat, which means that you might be getting a higher dose of plastic, of those harmful chemicals coming from that plastic, by eating hot foods from plastic takeout containers. And any plastic can leach, depending on the conditions. Unfortunately, at disposal, recycling is a poor solution. Not only does very little plastic get recycled, but even the plastic that does get recycled is not a closed loop. In other words, recycling a takeout container will not produce a new takeout container. Recycling a takeout container, at best, will be placed into a lower-quality product, and then that lower-quality product will not be recyclable. There are alternatives to this that exist, and yet we don't use them. We need to start transitioning towards a non-waste-producing solutions. Focusing on discard does not consider the long-lasting existential threat that plastic poses. We must reduce demand. And so here is a proposed bylaw, the prohibition as written. Except as herein provided, food establishments are prohibited from dispensing prepared food to customers in disposable food service containers and utensils made from plastic. Town facility users, as defined in the bylaw, are prohibited from dispensing prepared food to customers in disposable food service containers, and are prohibited from providing utensils made from plastic. And those disposable food service containers are prohibited only if they're made from plastic. The definitions for the terms used are standard for the state of Massachusetts and are also included in your warrant. The effective date of this bylaw is September 1st, 2024, meaning businesses will have over a year to transition. This is a fine schedule associated with the bylaw. Tonight, you have a decision to make. You have an opportunity to promote the health of our community and visitors, and take a leadership stance in environmentalism. It's time we put environment over profit. Our health is not worth the convenience of plastic. We need this bylaw, and we need it as a bylaw. It requires no further debate and no committee formation to evaluate its merits. We know that plastic is an issue, and we know that there are sustainable options available for businesses to transition to. Voluntary action does not work. We've known about these issues for decades, and effective action has now been taken. It's time for us to take a bolder step towards a livable world. Change starts with you and your vote. And so I urge you, as a member of the inheriting generation, I urge you, vote yes on Article 18. Thank you.
I've got you on the list in the balcony, but Ms. Siegel is next.
Thank you. Deborah Siegel, Precinct 6. There is no question about the validity and the horrors of the consequences that Mr. Gessen has presented tonight. Before offering this amendment, I would like to, I'm going to offer an amendment, and before doing that, I would like to recognize the efforts of both Mr. Gessen and the Select Board to attack this crisis. I would like to amend Article 18 to delete the text of the entire bylaw as proposed and replace it with the following: that the Select Board authorize the administration to develop rules and regulations governing food establishment's use of single-use plastic disposable containers and utensils when serving the public. I would anticipate that the Board of Health and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee be involved. Their participation would ensure that the process will be a very public one that encourages participation by the business community and the community as a whole, and I would hope that they would bring this back at fall town meeting. Having been a committed recycler and environmental advocate for close to 40 years, it pains me to oppose this article as written, especially because of the wonderful efforts that Mr. Gessen has put in. Should town meeting support this amendment, my sincere hope is that it will start the process of accomplishing Mr. Gessen's laudable and urgent goals. We have no time to waste. Thank you.
Ms. Siegel, by any chance, does that, do we have a slide for that?
No, but I...
Okay, yeah, could you just read it one more time for town meeting members?
Yes, the actual amendment is that the Select Board authorize the administration to develop rules and regulations governing food establishment's use of single-use plastic disposable containers and utensils when serving the public.
Okay, discussion on Ms. Siegel's amendment. Mr. Neto.
Joan Neto, Precinct 9, a question from Mr. Siegel, please. Deborah, the way the amendment is written, because it's not before as I would, the Select Board be forming a committee made up of different stakeholders and town officials, like we've done in the past when Falmouth has a problem? The Board of Selectmen in numerous times has put together committees, and if this is the case, I would highly support this amendment, where we bring in the experts, the Board of Health, the Solid Waste Committee, restaurant owners who'd be affected by this, and people like Mr. Gessen and others. Because he is correct, we're killing ourselves. I've stood up here before, the fish you eat is filled with plastic, and the fish I catch is filled with plastic. I go out tuna fishing 100 miles off Martha's Vineyard, and it's just floating everywhere. Those aren't make-believe pitches, I've never seen it that bad, but it exists. Plastic is probably one of the worst, it's so convenient, we all know that, but it's probably one of the worst things that we created. So I suppose, actually, the Chairman of the Selectmen should probably answer that, if I could...
So Ms. Siegel, do you...
I would envision a committee being formed, and as I said, would hope that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Board of Health and Mr. Gessen would be on that committee.
So my question then would be to the Chairman. Mr. Tucker?
If the amendment were to pass, I see that happening, and I think my point of contact would be the Health Agent and Mr. Robinson from the SWAC.
Then I, upon hearing that from the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I would hope that this meeting, in its wisdom, as it's done many times, because we create the committees at town meeting and the Selectmen appoint them, and that that would be the best way to solve this problem and bring everyone together. Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Mr. Gessen?
Just to respond to that, regulations are not enough. Again, we've known about these issues for decades, and nothing has been done. A committee of a couple of people is nothing compared to an entire collective town coming together to fight this issue. There are solutions out there, and we've lived without plastic before, and there are ways of moving away from it again. There's a year, and almost a year and a half to implement this. And as a regulation, it won't be enough. It needs to be a holistic ban on plastic takeout containers, because plastic is the issue.
Okay, Mr. Latimer?
I support this amendment for only one reason, as a lawyer. I want this lawyer to be, I want this regulation or this bylaw to be bulletproof, which means if we, as an elected body with no particular expertise, pass this as a regulation that prohibits people from doing something on pain of penalties, on fines, it could be challenged. Most recently, we all know about the federal judge in Texas who has thrown out this abortion pill because it's alleged that the FDA didn't do its due diligence in forming the approval. Well, the same kind of principle would apply here, only we'd have people who are being hit for violating this taking us to court. The way to prevent that is to, and I would suggest we also bring in the DPW to document the problem, as it exists in this town, and the Health Agent, and do their diligence, and come back in the fall with, I would say, not simply a regulation, but a ban. But just do it right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Casparian?
Michael Casparian, Precinct 5, President of Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. I do want to speak in support of the amendment, but I'd also like to make a couple of comments. I was going to speak, I was one of the people that held this article. I'd like to take a minute and just make a couple of comments, if I may, before I support this amendment. Is that allowed?
Yeah, we are going to go back to the main motion after the vote on the amendment.
I understand, I do want to support the amendment, but I want to make a couple of things clear.
Yep, go ahead.
I applaud Mr. Gessen for what he's doing. Known him for a long time, he is a generation, my children are the same age, and I agree. And I don't think anybody in the room would disagree that this is a serious problem, and has been a serious problem for a lot of years. What's really heartwarming to me is somebody your age is willing to take the time to come here, be involved, present something like this, drive here from the University of Massachusetts, and actually make this plea on the behalf of your generation and the entire town. What I'll disagree with you, sir, is that everything is debatable. That there is not any one group of 243 people that can enforce something on the end-users and the stakeholders without their involvement, which is why I support this amendment. Yes, you did meet with the restaurant owners, only after the Chamber of Commerce heard from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, who said, "Have you heard from the petitioner? No." "We contacted all our restaurant owners?" "No." If we didn't get involved, the restaurant owners wouldn't even know this was happening, and this vote would be taken tonight. So I agree with the amendment, I believe a committee should be formed. I agree with Madam Chair in her selection, who'd be on that committee, but I would also ask that the end-users, the stakeholders, the restaurant owners would be included. The end goal of the article is wonderful. What the amendment will provide is the opportunity for dialogue, for attainable goals that can be measured. If we're going to do something punitive, where we're going to be put in fines for people not following the rules, we have to come up with a bylaw or guidelines that people can understand and that people can actually pay attention to and get measured. This bylaw, the way it's written, I mean, for one example is, why are schools exempt? If we want to teach people about plastic use, why would the kids in the schools be able to use plastic utensils, but restaurant users cannot? Why can people walk into Ace Hardware and buy screws and nuts in plastic containers? I understand, we have to start somewhere, and the restaurants are a good place. And to Ms. Siegel's point in her amendment, I haven't spoken to one restaurant owner, those of whom are even included right here, who have not said they'd be on board. Last fall, Mr. Donald withdrew his application when the chamber promised to reach out, which we've done consistently with the restaurants. It's been four months, and many of them have not only completely stopped using black plastic, but those who have not been able to are looking for alternatives. What this bylaw presents right now, it's punitive, and what it talks about is the problem. I don't see any solutions. What I see is, there are other alternatives out there. Has anybody asked the restaurant owners what those solutions are? So I ask you all to support this amendment, we want to be a part of the solution. I would also ask Mr. Gessen, if this amendment passes and this committee is formed, that you would serve on that, to represent not only your generation, but also the younger people in this town, because this is a serious problem. But we're not going to get it solved until we all come together, and this amendment will provide the vehicle to do that. Thank you.
Okay, down on the far right. Yep. Ms. Freitag? Is it? No, Judy's on the list, but you're way down.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. I have a question, if I may, Mr. Moderator, to the petition, or to Ms. Siegel regarding her amendment. Please, Ms. Siegel, this amendment that you're proposing, am I correct in understanding that it would not change the effective date of this new bylaw, being September 1st, 2024?
No, it strikes it in its entirety.
Oh, it struck it in its entirety?
Yep.
It's in its entirety.
Yeah, let's do it, Mike, just for the record, please.
It strikes the bylaw in its entirety, and I would assume that the Select Board would set a similar effective date. I would hope that they would.
Thank you for that clarification. So then, if I may, Mr. Moderator, may I address the Chair of the Board, please?
Yep, go ahead.
Madam Chair, could we get some kind of encouragement or some kind of comment from you suggesting that you would be able to present results from such an anti-plastic container and plastic utensil committee by next town meeting? By next November?
We, yes.
Not by next April's town meeting? A year?
April or November?
Well, November, I guess, yeah, sure, November. That's great.
Yes, November. However, I would also take more information from the rest of the Board as to creating the committee and setting the guidelines in terms of time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, in the balcony?
Hi, I'm not a town meeting member, may I have permission to speak?
Are you a resident, citizen, or taxpayer of the town?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. In the balcony?
Hi, I'm not a town meeting member. May I have permission to speak?
Are you a resident citizen or taxpayer of the town?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing the woman in the balcony to speak, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay. For the folks in the balcony, you're not town meeting member, so you can't vote. Okay?
We understand.
No, there was people voting up there, so. That's why I put them up there, because I can hear the difference, right? Okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to point out that Mr. Gesen is not alone. He is part of an organization that is Capewide and he's representing this article in Falmouth. And I think that's really an important aspect of this whole thing, this whole process.
Yeah. Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Madhavi Venkatesan. I live in Brewster. I am the executive director for Sustainable Practices. The reason why I'm also speaking is because I know he's limited in the amount of time that he can ask, answer questions. And I think one basic one needs to be answered. We live in a society, and I'm speaking as an economist, that is my profession, I'm a professor. The economy, actually, all of you have been taught that demand creates supply. And yet, we keep on thinking that because the supply doesn't exist, something cannot change. The moment you provide an incentive, things start to occur. There is an incentive to provide alternative products. We shouldn't be so afraid of change that we allow ourselves to continue to ingest the very chemicals that we all know are harmful to us. The majority of the people in this room grew up without plastic. And in the 40 years that we have been alive in the last four decades, we have seen the normalization of obesity, endocrine disruption, cardiovascular disease, fertility issues, and many others. And today, The Guardian released a report specifically tying plastic use and consumption to obesity as well as other problems that we're seeing grow so slowly that they've become normalized in our society. Putting this off to try to find an easier way to solve the problem isn't solving the problem. Only eliminating the issue is going to force us to take into consideration whether convenience is really something that's compatible with sustainability and human welfare. One thing that we would like to also stress is that short-term profits shouldn't be coming at the cost of long-term life and human health and environmental welfare. I really hope that you'll think about that tonight when you take your vote. And thank you, Philip, for your efforts.
Mr. Antonucci? Mr. Antonucci?
Bob Antonucci, precinct six. This brings to mind tonight a good practice for town meeting. For many times, I've been thinking that someone brings a petition article in and we vote yes or no without a lot of study. So I think this amendment tonight really sets in place a process and procedure which we should use in the future. We did the banning of the water bottles and I supported that, but we did it in one night with any formal input from the community. Going forward, I think this would set an example for other petitioners that we do it this way. I'm confident that the board of selectmen, Ms. Gesen, and everybody else will be involved and will be back here in November supporting some kind of article. I agree with all the issues, but I think best practice is take a deep breath, step back, and then come back. Thank you.
Mr. Cullinane?
Jason Cullinane, precinct six. I am totally in agreement with Mr. Gesen on all of his points. However, I must also go with this idea of the amendment. It is suitable, feasible, and acceptable that we take our time, as is pointed out, for legal reasons, for practical reasons, setting a precedent, and allowing, I hope, experts in, or not experts, but companies that make alternate packaging can be allowed to speak and present, you know, what they do. And have some of the companies and takeout businesses in our town look at the options that they might not even know about, whether it's reusable metal containers that are checked out like a library book, or something made with leaves or sugar or something like that that decomposes. So I think having serious study on this is the best way forward to make sure it's ironclad and that we get it done and do it properly. Thank you.
Judy Fenwick, precinct one. I'd like to see this amendment on the screen so that, I'm a visual learner, I'd really like to see it in print.
Unfortunately, we don't have it on a slide.
Is there any way to key it in? I'm sorry. I gave a copy to Mr. Palmer, so perhaps...
Yeah, but we just don't have a slide.
If you'd like me to, I can read it again with, through Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, read it one more time.
Okay.
Please.
That the select board authorized the administration to develop rules and regulations governing food establishments' use of single-use plastic disposable containers and utensils when serving the public.
Okay. I had, yeah, over here. Yep. Yes. Triple C in your, well, you need to have a, Ms. Ball, you need a microphone.
Ruth Brazier, precinct five, and I'm a long-term member of the solid waste advisory committee. I would, just on the amendment, I think that we should also include our solid waste and recycling coordinator. And that she, that person in that position should be included. And also, I'm hoping that our sustainability person would be involved, because this is a sustainability issue. It's not just board of health, it's not just solid waste advisory committee. We should have a representative from the DPW and their programs, and we should also have somebody with a broad vision, like a solid waste coordinator. Thank you.
Okay, just so you know, we're, our finance director is actually typing up that amendment on a thumb drive so we can try to get it up on a screen. So we'll do that as soon as, if we can. Mr. Cook? You're on the list, Mr. Hargraves. Long list.
I agree with this amendment completely and not for the point of opposing Mr. Gesen. I wanted to bring up that at our precinct meeting, I was talking to Doug Brown and asking why he was supporting this and why he liked it. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Doug, but in essence, saying he wanted to encourage young voices in town meeting, which I think is completely important, looking at all of us around here. But I think what comes with that is also an education and the knowledge about the best practices for getting good and successful articles at town meeting. And that involves conversation. I know you want, you're very passionate about this, you want this to succeed, but your presentation was more or less a sledgehammer in not involving the public in discussion. That's, in my short experience at town meeting, I found that those are the articles that really work well because we're here to discuss, include all the stakeholders to make it work. And I hope you're on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you for your hard work and for trying to move us in the right direction. And I want to say that straight off the top. When I was walking a lot of different properties 15 years ago with Margaret Russell, who many of you will remember, she would talk to me about the town and how to get things to change in the town. And one of the best lessons she ever taught me was that in the town of Falmouth, it takes approximately four times to bring something to the town before it can digest it and change it. When I talked with Mr. Gesen about this article after we had the session at the library, I did recommend to him that he let it digest a little bit and work through it a little more. Not because it needs to change, but it needs to be swallowed. And as Mr. Caspary said, when we push things on people without them being involved, they balk and they usually fight it. I have taken samples of spoons to a person in town that goes through 6,000 plastic spoons a week selling ice cream. I have tried really hard to get that to change. And I will tell you that the comment I always hear is, "It costs me a lot more money." So when you form this committee, if that is the way we go, I hope one of the things that you'll find is a way to put, to make sure that the consumer, not the businessperson, bears the burden of that, because these are usually things that are conveniences and in some cases even luxuries. They are not necessarily necessities. So if we can make it clear to businesses, we're not trying to make them swallow this extra money, but we're willing to pay for it because we care as a town, I hope that you'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hargraves?
Thank you very much. Peter Hargraves, precinct nine. I want to congratulate Mr. Gesen on an audacious presentation, an audacious goal. And one of the shortcomings I find in the amendment is it's just not audacious enough to do justice to what's needed. So I support the amendment, but I think, and I'm, and thank you, Ms. Fenwick, for asking for it to be read again, and there it is, saying that a regulation governing food establishment and single-use plastics, use of single-use plastics, is just not audacious enough. I think it needs to state something in the spirit of the petitioner's request that says something more like how to replace and eliminate plastic. And then we can use that, that's a better yardstick to measure the progress and solutions that this committee would come up with. I like everything people have said about the process and the committee, but I don't think that's audacious enough. So thanks for giving us a vision.
Okay. And thank you to Mr. Senteo for typing up the amendment for the slide on the fly. Thank you, sir.
So, I mean, so someone asked, "Am I amending it?" I mean, I think, I haven't, I didn't see it and I haven't considered it, but help me with this, please. I'll say what's on my mind for better communication and you guys can polish it if you need to or want to. I would say the select board authorized the administration to develop rules and regulations governing food establishments, governing the rules and regulations with the goal of eliminating or replacing the use of single-use plastic disposable containers and utensils. So rules and regulations with the goal of eliminating or replacing the use of single-use plastic disposable containers, because as Mr. Gesen has said, I think, and also Madhavi, that, you know, regulating them doesn't do any good.
Okay, so let's do the, so I need the exact language. With the goal of...
Eliminating or replacing.
All right, let me, wait, hold on. Eliminating, the goal of eliminating or replacing.
Eliminate, just eliminate, thank you, friends, eliminate the use of single, the single-use
It's the Second Amendment. So the discussion is, pause this, the discussion is now going to be on Mr. Hargraves' amendment, which is to add the language with the goal of eliminating the use of single-use plastics?
Yes.
Yep. And then we'll debate that a little bit, and then we'll vote on that. If you vote yes, then Ms. Siegel's amendment has been amended to include that language. Then we will vote on that. If you vote no on Mr. Hargraves' amendment, then we will go back to Ms. Siegel's amendment, vote yes or no on that. And if you vote yes, then we vote the article as amended. If you vote no, we go back to the main motion. Okay? So I'm going to open up a new speakers list on Mr. Hargraves' amendment. Mr. Gesen, do you want to address that amendment?
I'll address that amendment as I would address the other one as well. At the end of the day, I appreciate and I commend everybody's drive and intentions towards reading the world of plastic. I think we all see the same issue here, and I'm happy to hear that. At the same time, and I look forward to working with the town however this may turn out, at the same time, the issue is plastic. And what makes plastic so economically appealing? It's a durable material and it's cheap and it's very malleable, so you can shift it into whatever form you want it to be. So that means that it's always going to be the better option to use plastic. And so if you ban one single type of plastic, one specific use of plastic and one specific type of material in this place, another type of plastic will come up and replace that one. And yet, the thing that makes plastic such an appealing thing economically is also the thing that's killing us, because it's such a durable material that when we stop using it, it doesn't just cease to exist. It exists for centuries on end in our waterways, in our oceans. And that presentation may have felt like a sledgehammer. Maybe 10 years ago, when we were facing the same issues, it wouldn't have felt that way because the numbers wouldn't be that crazy. But that's just reality. That's where we are right now. And regulations saying that we'll think about making change, that should have happened 15 years ago. Right now, we're at a point where it has to be bold action. We have to start moving forward with something that will legitimately influence change. There are alternatives out there. Some of them are more inventive than others. Some of them are as basic as replacing it with a biodegradable. Some of them are reusables. But the only way to stimulate change, behavioral change, is with passing something bold and holistic. And so that is the intent of this, to be a little audacious maybe. But that audacity doesn't come from a place of muddling the facts. Everything on there was real. Everything on there was true. And I find it tough to believe that a collective, over a year and a half, will not find a solution or use, an alternative for themselves to use if one single material is taken out of their supply. And so I please, I beg you, please, say no to both of these amendments and approve the article. Thank you.
You're on the list, Ms. Fenwick. Ms. Wiedler, I'll add you to the list.
I thank Mr. Hargraves for his...
No, I said Ms. Fenwick.
Oh, I am sorry.
Okay, Ms. Siegel?
I thank Mr. Hargraves and I think it's a great idea and I like the audacity of it. So I think substituting the words eliminating and replacing is a good move. Thank you, Peter.
I think we're just using with the goal of eliminating. That was his final wordsmithing, which is up there now.
So where is this amendment in there? I'm sorry.
So this is the new amendment, with the goal of eliminating, right?
Okay.
With the goal of eliminating single-use plastic disposable container.
Okay.
He chose not to use the word replacing after the side conversation with a colleague.
And I thought that the word food establishments had somehow gotten out of there too. So, thank you. How did you do that so fast? Is this in?
Well, I'll take all the credit for that, but I don't know how it happened.
Okay.
That was our IT staff. Thank you.
So while I have the microphone, one of the things I found, and I talked to Philip about this last night when we were leaving, is that town meeting likes to move a little bit slower sometimes than passionate petitioners. And so I told him to be patient because we might not pass what he had invented, but what might come about tonight. So this is a very short, not sweet enough for Philip, but I think with your patience, by November, hopefully, we'll have something. And I would just like to mention, food establishments are moving slower than the hotel business. Hotels are now getting rid of the nips that used to be in the bath... Hotels are now getting rid of the nips that used to be in the bathrooms with your shower gel, your shampoo, your conditioner, and they're replacing them with larger containers that are wall-mounted in showers. So we got to think bold to make this happen for you, but I, I think with the addition of Mr. Hargraves, that we're on a good path. Thank you.
Okay.
Just that if the maker of the original amendment is acceptable as a friendly amendment, can we all vote?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, we're not going to rewrite parliamentary procedure on the floor of town meeting. Go ahead. Yep.
Jim Callahan, Precinct 5. Just a quick question. The original Article 18, I believe, is 17 months. Are we saying in 17 months, we can't have committees and everyone involved in deciding exactly how we're going to proceed? I don't quite understand. We're talking about amendments, we're talking about changing things, 17 months for all the committees and the great people we have in town and the committees to get together? I'm a little confused. Can someone answer that question? 17 months, and we can't really get everything together after passing this Article 18?
Are you directing the question to somebody in, in particular?
Anybody, anybody.
Okay. Mr. Brown? Good answer.
I believe the intent was that we come back and have this in November to vote at town meeting, and then the following interim period would be to ramp up to it. I think that's what we agreed on.
Yeah, no, I think his, I think his question was the effective date of the underlying main motion, right? That was the question Mr. Callahan had. Okay, Ms. Whitehead?
Hi, just have one little question that's in my head. Eliminating single-use plastic disposable containers, but it's for all of the public, serving the public. Supermarkets have single-use disposable containers as well as other containers. If we're trying to get rid of plastic completely, I would think we would certainly have to have them as a stakeholder. Supermarkets, the corporations, the Stop &amp; Shop, Shaw's, Market Basket, all these have a lot of plastic. So I don't know how that enters into this, but I think it's an important one if you want to do, cover the bases.
Ms. Letimer?
If something's worth doing, it's worth doing, doing right. That's, I think, what most of us here understand. I do not agree with this amendment to the amendment because it puts the cart before the horse. It tells the committee what it's supposed to find. I think a better wording for, if you want to add words to Ms. Siegel's amendment, would be to explore alternatives and to work with the community, especially the business community, to find those alternatives. Again, if the target date is September 2024, well then, why not form this committee with the object of exploring the use of alternatives without telling them they have to come up with a way to ban plastics and have them come back in the fall? Get the bylaw or the, the regulation in, up and running on September 2004. What's the problem there? That's doing it right. That's due process. It's due process for everyone involved, and that's what the law requires. So I think I would vote against this amendment and let the committee that's formed under Ms. Siegel's amendment understand that part of their job is to come up with reasonable alternatives that the business community can meet. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCafferty? Mr. McCafferty?
Perhaps a minor but significant point, is it talks about regulations and not a bylaw, so it wouldn't come back to town meeting.
If it's a regulation, it's administrative law. If it's statutory, it comes back to town meeting, so...
We get to approve regulations? Okay. I thought only bylaws?
No, no, no. I said if, it would be administrative law, so like the, maybe under the Board of Health would set a regulation.
Okay.
But statutory law is voted here. And, and this, the clerk was reminding me, but I said I didn't want to make this a civics class. So we're authorizing the Board of Selectmen to do something they can already do, right? So you're going to show your will, this is non-binding, but we do have the commitment from the board talking about their vision of what to do. So this is non-binding. They could say, "Hey, we want to bring a bylaw back to town meeting and have you vote on it once we get everybody together." Or they could go to a regulatory agency that has the ability to make regulations, which is administrative law.
Without coming back to town meeting.
Administrative law does not come to town meeting, correct?
Right.
Unless the enabling statute requires it to, and this doesn't. All right, let's, let's take a vote on just this, this amendment, the amendment with adding "with the goal of eliminating." All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
So pin the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. And I'll go back to my speakers list on the Siegel amendment as amended. The next person was in the balcony?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Then was Mr. Herbst?
Thank you.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
You're next on the list.
I'm next on the list.
Yep. Yeah, she said she's all set.
Yeah.
Ralph Herbst, Precinct 8. I did take advantage of speaking to a restaurateur before tonight's vote, and I also got some samples that I gave Mr. Gesen, which he probably already had, about some alternatives to plastic. And this restaurateur said, "It's very difficult to do something like this town by town." He had advised me to advise you that the best way to do these types of things is through the state. So that's more involved, and I'm not advocating that we don't do it for our town. I, I'd like to see our town lead in these kinds of things. But one thing I would recommend to, if the committee is appointed to research this and make recommendations, the restaurateur that I spoke with said that there is a organization called the Massachusetts Restaurant Association, and he said that they are looking at alternatives to, for plastic in these situations, and they're working with the state. So I would only recommend tonight that if a commit, a committee is appointed, that they consult with the Massachusetts Restaurant, Restaurant Association before they have duplication of effort and understand where that association is going statewide. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Clark?
David?
Yeah, I'll put you on the list.
Peter Clark, Precinct 1. I think we're asking the Select Board to do an important but ambitious task to report back to us. I, if the Second Amendment hadn't been used, I would have been recommending a budget. I hope that the Select Board has some money, that they can help this committee to ask consultants or get other advice that may be necessary. So I can't recommend a budget, but I hope you'll provide one if needed for this job. Thank you.
Okay. The gentleman in the aisle, yep.
John Nolan, Precinct 1. Thank you very much for your effort. We appreciate it, and my wife and I just, we have two grandchildren, and we know that, you know, it's very important to them. We got a good lesson the other day. We got a gift basket of fruit in a plastic basket with a plastic insert and about 25 plastic rods, and it's just, it's unbelievable. I think this, if we go with this amendment, it gives us six months to put some teeth into the bylaw, to be specific, and still maintain the September 2024 date. And I, I really advocate this amendment.
Okay, Mr. Wilber?
Hi, my name is Jude Wilber. I'm a resident of Hatchville. May I speak?
Yep.
Hi, everybody. I, I'm an oceanographer by trade, and in 1987, while working for the Sea Education Association and sailing out of Woods Hole, I published a paper that was entitled "Plastic in the North Atlantic Ocean." It was the first paper to deal with plastic distribution widespread in the oceans of the world. And it was my 15 minutes of fame. I was interviewed by the Washington Post, I was interviewed by the Los Angeles Times. And at the time, I have to say, I didn't think it was going to go the direction that it went. I thought it was maybe just a passing thing that we were seeing out there in the ocean along with tar. Tar was another pollutant that co-evolved with plastic out there. But I was wrong. I was wrong, and as we've seen tonight, the evidence is clear that there are five great garbage patches coinciding with the five great gyres of the global ocean. And it's not surprising that's where they are. But it's not just out there. That, that plastic is in a circulatory pattern that is delivered to coastal systems all over the planet too. And I'm still involved in this project of global distribution of plastic, and I'm still, I'm still writing papers and I'm still reviewing papers. So this, this discussion tonight is very close to my, to me and to my history in this town. And so I would think it would be a good thing for a town where the seminal data on oceanic plastic came from to be one of the towns to lead the way in doing something about it. And I think the way to do that is through the amendment that is under consideration now. Put together a committee, make sure everybody is heard on this matter, and then lead the way. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Leonardi?
Amy Leonardi, Precinct 8. Philip, thank you very much for bringing this before us. As a mother to young kids and knowing a lot of our families in town, I think you're on the right track. I think this amendment is actually going to go create a furthering of what you are trying to do than you first sought to do. This is going to go beyond just the food and restaurant establishments. This has the ability, if you let this town meeting go through the Board of Selectmen with this committee and this amendment, to affect our schoolchildren, to go into every aspect of this town, and to actually truly make a huge difference. And I think you got to let us get that chance to do it, because it will make a massive impact. And you are on the right track, and you are speaking not only for your generation, but the generation behind yours. So I appreciate that.
Okay, the question will come on the amendment as amended. All those in favor of the amendment as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
So pin the chair that the ayes have it by a majority. And the question now comes on the main motion as amended twice. All those in favor of the main motion as amended twice signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Article 19. This is a resolution to support changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. The Select Board for the main motion. Madam Chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 19 as printed.
As printed. Ms. Famon Silva.
Do I press, to move the slides forward, do I press...
You got to ask them, I don't.
My name is Sandy Famon Silva, Precinct 2. I am part of a statewide coalition to change the state flag and seal because I firmly believe, and many Native Americans agree, that non-native settlers should lead campaigns like this to right the wrongs of our history. Native Americans, only about 2% of the US population, cannot do this alone. As Robert Kraft reminded us recently in the fight against antisemitism, Jews representing only about 2.5% of the US population cannot and should not stand alone to end antisemitism. Native Americans at the time of the European encounter were a vibrant, highly diverse people of 100 million or more, living in thousands of tribes and named settlements throughout what is now the United States of America. Within 100 years of contact, an estimated 90% died of disease, conflict, and starvation. Settlers in 1620 found substantial evidence of human activity throughout New England, including gardens, villages, neighborhoods, and well-worn trails throughout the region. Well-established systems of trade existed as far as Ohio and the Southeast. Indians traded food, shells, wood products, pelts, rock, and stone, including flint, obsidian, and quartz, among other commodities. As you can see from this slide, the Massachusetts Nation, from whom our state took its name, had dozens of established named settlements in 1620. As Native Americans were murdered or died of disease, villages, gardens, hunting grounds, and foraging grounds were taken over. Only some place names survived the physical and cultural genocide. Wampanoag settlements too spanned a wide area from southeastern Mass to Cape Cod, as among the Massachusetts familiar indigenous place names survived, although the meanings of most were forgotten or abandoned. Settlers implemented the doctrine of discovery, which gave them absolute right to take by purchase or conquest land belonging to Native Americans. This doctrine was finally reputed, repudiated by the Vatican only last month, on March 30th, 2023, and was at the heart of the tragic processes of pacification, displacement, removal, and genocide of indigenous peoples throughout the Western Hemisphere. This tragic history lives perennially in the hearts and souls of First Nations people who relive the pain and suffering of their past every day when they see and hear acts of cultural expropriation, disrespect, and stereotyping. These are triggers for painful memories of the virtual extermination of their ancestors and their cultural integrity. The Flag and Seal Campaign is part of a global movement to address the painful past to, this painful past, and to end the use of stereotypes, demeaning images, names, symbols, and representations belonging to First Nations people. As we examine Article 19 and the flag's images and symbols, we learn how and why these images hurt, demean, stereotype, and expropriate Indian life, culture, and humanity. We'll look at some of these on the next slide. The bow is an accurate representation of one taken from an individual shot and killed in Sudbury, Massachusetts in 1665, according to Edmund Garrett, the illustrator who produced the 1898 version of the flag and seal. Whoops, I'm sorry. I didn't want to do that. The physical proportions of the Native American depicted on the flag were taken from a Native skeleton exhumed in Winthrop. The skull and face were taken from a photograph of a Chipewa Ojibwa chief who lived in Montana, described by Garrett, as I quote, "A fine specimen of Indian," though he was not from Massachusetts. The sword looming over the Indian is modeled on Miles Standish's own broadsword. Miles Standish was the military commander for Massachusetts, known for killing Native Americans, including at Weymouth in April of 1623, barely two years after the pilgrims arrived. Ted K, a flag expert interviewed in 2019 in the New York Times, said, "The sword was added to memorialize liberty from the British. It was not meant to be oppressing to the Indian." It was not meant to be oppressing to the Indian, but certainly that's how people perceive it." Just as the Vatican finally reckoned with its past only last month, we as a state must reckon with our past. I was not there. You were not there. But when we refuse to acknowledge the pain caused by the colonial encounter and the disturbing history and origins of images and symbols displayed on our state flag, we become complicit in perpetuating this pain. For almost 50 years, efforts have been made to change the flag, motto, and seal. John Slow Turtle Peters, a Mashpee-Wampanoag spiritual leader and director of the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs, joined State Representative Byron Rushing in numerous campaigns to change the flag without success. Finally, on January 6, 2021, a 19-member commission on the flag and seal was formed with six tribal representatives, including David Whedon, Mashpee-Wampanoag tribal chairman, and our own state representative, David Viera. Thank you, David. After listening to testimony and undertaking thoughtful deliberations, on May 22, 2022, the commission unanimously recommended that the state should redesign the flag, motto, and seal, and incorporate series and terms in a new seal and motto that are inspirational and inclusive of the diverse perspectives, history, and experience of Massachusetts residents. They further recommended that our state should dedicate more resources to educating the public about the history and cultures of Massachusetts, in particular indigenous history and culture, the history and usages of the current seal and motto, and the harm inflicted by and efforts to change the seal and motto. What does the resolution ask? Article 19 asks Falmouth Town Meeting members to support the recommendations of the state commission and send letters urging Governor Healy, Senator Moran, and Representatives Viera and Fernandez to help to finish the job already endorsed by the commission. Throughout Massachusetts, there is strong support among Native Americans, and more than 56 towns and cities have already voted to support this campaign, as this map details. Tribal supporters include the North American Indian Center of Boston, the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Council Chair David Whedon, Cheryl Andreas Maltese, Chairwoman of the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead Aquina, Brittany Wally Nipmoc, Elizabeth Solomon, Elder of the Massachusetts at Ponkapook, Melissa Freretti, Herring Pond Wampanoag, and Amelia and Leonard Forhawks from Florence, Mass, among many others, individuals and groups. Brian Whedon said in a 2022 interview, "The flag is," I quote, "a reminder of the oppression and the genocide that was caused to the indigenous people." "We all agree, after hearing from the indigenous groups in the commission, that our nation's history has been very one-sided. It's always been from the colonial perspective," he said, "and the indigenous people have been the ones who have been advocating for the Commonwealth to bring forward this change to our state seal and our motto." "I ask you this evening to vote yes on Article 19, to support this change, so we can finally begin the process of healing from this painful chapter in our collective memories and properly honor our Native Americans, our Native American brothers and sisters, friends and neighbors." Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, I'm Kevin Doyle, from 346 Mill Road, but I now live in Southport in Mashpee, and request permission to speak.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Doyle to speak signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Unanimous.
Well, thank you, Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members. I am Kevin Doyle, and there's much to say, but I prepared a four-minute statement in appeal to keep the flag as it is. Governor Healy has already given an extension to the flag commission, and now will go into the third year without a proposal. The commission is 19 very smart people with a mix of tribal leaders, as you've heard, and those who arrived after 1620. But rather than spend years designing and explaining a new flag, we would be better served to educate schoolchildren and the populace about the history portrayed on the flag we have flown since we became a nation. It might be easier to change the flag than to change perceptions, but I'm a Revolutionary War historian and a student of heraldry, so I'll try. There are two images on our flag. One is the Native American, generally accepted as representing the Wampanoag tribe, and he dominates the shield as he should. He stands tall and fit, portrayed in gold, and armed with his bow and arrow. Hardly a representation of weakness or subjugation, he stands unfettered and proud, just as the artist intended it when the state standardized the seal in 1898. It's the second image. The silver star on the shield that holds the relationship to the sword in the banner. Often portrayed as white, it represents the thousands of colonists who fought in the American Revolution. The star comes from the Betsy Ross flag. Massachusetts took our star and made it part of our own flag to make it clear to England and the world that we were proud to be one of the 13 colonies that declared our independence on the Fourth of July. Massachusetts is the cradle of liberty. I was Lexington Minuteman during the nation's bicentennial in 1976, and I take great pride in Emerson's verse written in 1876, familiar to all Americans. "By the rude bridge that oched the flood, Their flag to April's breeze unfurled; here once the embattled farmers stood, And fired the shot heard round the world." So what flag would have unfurled at the Concord Bridge? It's that one. It's the flag of the Minutemen from Bedford, the only flag known to have been carried to Concord. And this is a photograph of the almost 250-year-old Bedford flag that's currently enshrined in the Bedford Library. "The blade is up and away to warn foreign adversaries: Don't tread on me." The motto, "Conquer or die," is written in Latin on a gold banner. "Give me liberty, or give me death." The bent arm comes out of a cloud brandishing a sword. This is the image that inspired the crest on our seal. And if you look at it as it flies upright, you see it on the left, but there's the state seal on the right, when the cloud is now in a horizontal position. That became the state crest in 1777. In heraldry, the crest stands apart from the shield. It expresses the value of the bearer. You may have one in your own family coat of arms. "Ours speaks to the courage to fight for a cause." And that's exactly what the motto bears. "En sepedit placidum, sub libertate quae etam." "By the sword, we seek peace, but a peace only sub libertate, only under liberty." The sword and the motto were first sketched in the state seal by Paul Rivera in 1775. Some of you may have a copy of the document that I had prepared that shows that seal. The current sword is the artist's model of a sword. It wasn't chosen for who owned it. It was chosen for what it would look like. All artists work from a model. And this was a model of what a broadsword would look like. It's not a sign of oppression. It symbolizes the Minuteman's courage in the pursuit of liberty. Falmouth's resolve was challenged by the British at the Old Stone Ark in 1779, and again in 1814. Wampanoags fought, and 15 died, for independence in the Revolution, and they have fought in every American war since then. For 250 years, Massachusetts has flown our flag with pride as we celebrate our gratitude to the two groups that made our state possible: the Wampanoag tribe in 1620 and the colonial Minutemen in 1775. The flag should be an inspiration to all of us. It would be wrong to change it. Let's educate everyone about the proud history that our state flag proclaims. Please vote no on Article 19. Your grandchildren will thank you.
Mr. Latimer?
May I respond?
I'll put you on the list. You only get to speak twice more. So just, you know, unless they ask you a question directly.
Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. I appreciate Mr. Kelly's interesting history lesson. The problem we have today is that seal is not understood in the way Mr. Kelly explains it. It is reasonably understood, given the state of what we used to call Indian affairs in this country. It is reasonably understood as a sign of oppression, of the sword conquering the Indians. That's the way it looks. Okay? And that's what we're dealing with. That's why much of the impetus for changing the seal comes from our Native American neighbors. Now, I can speak to this issue with some experience, because when I started in Falmouth High School, I played football as a freshman. I was not a Clipper. I was a Maroon Marauder. I liked that. But the emblem was the Native in a war bonnet, which had nothing to do with Falmouth. And it was, in those days, we had Mashpee kids here because Mashpee didn't have a high school. And the impetus to change that came from the Wampanoag community. And I think that was around 1960. We were way out ahead on that idea of that we have to show respect to our Native American neighbors by not using them as an emblem of some kind of thing that they are not. So that was about, what, about 80 years? No, about 60 years ago now. About 60 years ago, that we stopped being one of those schools that you see all over the place that exploit the Native American heritage. Barnstable just came around to doing that, I think, two years ago. Now they're the Red Hawks. They were the Red Men right up until just recently. So I support this. And I think to get to the real point of this, well, what should be the emblem on that flag if not the Native American? And I suggest...I'm UMass, class of '72, and I suggest that the state do what UMass did. Every college...not every college, but almost every state college, so many, many state colleges, have an Indian logo. But UMass is the only state college that can and now does have a Minuteman logo. And I would support a change of the state flag, and I would strongly suggest that we place that Indian figure, who looks like, whether he meant to or not, but it looks like he's being conquered, with the Minuteman, who, you know, is really the symbol of how we, as a state and as a nation, attained our independence from the oppression of Great Britain. So I would suggest this, that we support this, and some of us can put in the suggestion to the committee that let's follow UMass's lead and go with the Minuteman for the state of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Mr. Young? And then Ms. Famon Silva. Mr. Young and then Ms. Famon Silva.
Bob Young, Precinct 5. This resolution to support changing the state flag and seal, I'd like to bring a few things to Town Meeting Members, a few things of attention, as Joe Netto likes to say. January of 2021, a special commission on reviewing the Massachusetts state seal was created at the request of the governor. Dave is on that committee, I believe. May 17 of 2022, the commission voted unanimously to recommend that the state motto and seal be replaced. I'm going to repeat myself. The commission voted unanimously to recommend the state motto and seal be replaced. It's been done. November 2022, Massachusetts Legislature voted 100,000 to the committee to help them along with this. And finally, on March 30 of this year, they set a date of November 2023 to come up with a design. So I think we've accomplished everything that this lady is asking for, and it's moot. It doesn't really belong on Town Meeting floor. Asking for a letter of recommendation or resolution, it's already been accomplished.
Okay, Ms. Famon Silva?
With all due respect, we have gotten to this point after almost 50 years of lobbying the state legislature to do something, and we certainly are close. This resolution is meant to, as I said in my lengthy comment, it's meant to get the job done and declare to our state senator and representatives and the governor that this is our interest, that we want this finished. There was foot dragging during the first year of operation of this commission. That's why they didn't get the work finished by the end of the legislative session in December of 2022, and now they had to be reconstituted and reauthorized to again finish the work. It took them months to get the funding so that they could do activities that cost money. So they didn't have a budget until well into 2022, or 20...yeah, I think it was 2022, when the funding finally arrived. So what we're asking the town of Falmouth to do is to endorse the process and urge the legislature and the governor to finish this process and create a new flag and seal. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Carol Murphy, Precinct 9. Carol Murphy, Precinct 9. I am a proud ancestor of the Abenaki Nation. I do not support this article. Thank you.
Okay. In the balcony?
Hi, Donna Hammers, Precinct 1. I definitely support this article. The flag is oppressive and disrespectful, and the time for change is now. It's symbolic that we support our Native American people. We've done enough damage over the last 100 years or 300 years that we've taken over their land, annihilated them, when they lived in harmony with the land, and it's the least we can do. The time is now. Thank you.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I understand the arguments being made, and I must say that I came close to agreeing with the concept of replacing the Indian with the Concord Minuteman, primarily because he's the one who stands with the plow. You may have seen him as different from the Lexington Minuteman, which is, which I was, but which is also a far more aggressive-looking stature. The Concord Minuteman would be most ideal, seems to me. However, that would do a grave disservice to the Wampanoag people. The flag right now represents two eras: it's 1620 and 1775. It was created in 1777. The country didn't exist until 1783, when we signed the treaty. So this is older than the country, it really is. And so we stop there. That's why it stops with the Minuteman, 1775. But as you look at the images of the flag... Other one. That one. You can see, in heraldry form, the crest doesn't belong to the shield. The shield belongs all by itself. And when you put the pieces back together and you see the sword as being a Minuteman sword right from the Bedford flag, the first flag to fly in America, and then you look at the banner, there's two words, two Latin words, missing from the, quote, "En sepedit placidum," which is "Hic manus, this hand; inimicus tyrannis, hateful of tyrants; by the sword, will seek peace, but a peace only under liberty." That has nothing to do with the Indians. This is 150 years later. So that piece of education, to this gentleman's point, it's all about education. But what are we going to do? Spend the next five years telling why we have a card on the flag? It doesn't make... It doesn't make any sense. We have a very proud flag. We have one of the oldest flags in the country. We took that star off of the Betsy Ross flag. How many people know that? It wasn't even raised, and there's one gentleman right here. Thank you. A librarian figures. You know, and that's the point of it. I'll yield my two minutes. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Welch?
Hi, Kelly Welch, Precinct 2. I'm also a member of the school committee, but I'm speaking only as a member of a town meeting on this topic. I just want to ask for additional support or provide support for voting yes on this item. And I want to come back to two points that were already made. One is the composition of the group that made that unanimous vote to change the seal. We're hearing that tribes from across the Commonwealth have asked for this. Members of the tribe right next door have asked for this. And, you know, what are we saying if we ignore that request? And the second piece is what Mr. Latimer had said about what the perception of the flag is. It should not, we can't rely on an entire history lesson to explain pieces of it. When people take a look at the flag, what do they see? What does everyone see without that history lesson behind it, from where all the pieces came from, for where the star came from? And I just think it's really important to recognize that this vote is not a neutral or a yes vote, it's a yes or no vote. So if you vote no, what are you saying to the members of the tribes across the Commonwealth who have asked for this? We're literally saying to them, what you've asked for is unimportant. We're saying to all of the tribal members in our community and the kids in our schools that what they've asked for is not important. So please vote for this article.
Okay, Mr. Donald? If you could just pass the mic over.
Malcolm Donald, Precinct 6. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. We have a motion to close discussion. This requires two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Pendo chairs, if the ayes have it, by a two-thirds, and the question is called. The question will now come on the main motion, Article 19 as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Let's cue a slide. All those in favor of the main motion of Article 19 as printed signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed, press 2B. Article 22 is transfer of funds. Mr. Chairman for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 22 for the Lawrence School elevator repair and Morris Pond School fire alarm replacement as recommended.
Okay. As recommended? Who held this one? Who held Article 22?
Joe Netto.
Joe Netto, did you hold Article 22?
[laughter]
You've got a reputation that precedes yourself, huh, Joe? If you want to release the hold, I'd be fine with that. There we go. All right, as recommended. All those in favor of the main motion as recommended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 23.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23 as recommended.
Okay, as recommended. This is $240,000 from free cash for the school roofs. Discussion on Article 23. Ms. Freitag?
Thank you, Melissa Freitag, Precinct 8, or 6, excuse me. I did indeed hold this, and I just wanted to hold it because I know that we've been through a couple of difficult years, but these roof repairs should have been embedded into either the town capital project, capital plan, or if the school committee has a capital plan, should have been in there and not being tapped in a town meeting article. And I hope that in the future, that it will, that all of these roof repairs will come up in a schedule as necessary. But I'm in favor of this article. Just, we need to get some sharper bookkeeping, I guess.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 23? Hearing on the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 24, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24 as recommended.
As recommended? This is for funding the design and construction of improvements, costs related of inflation to the town's wastewater treatment facility. Let's start there and then we'll go over.
My name is Kim Comart, Precinct 8. My wife has owned a house in Deep Pond, on Deep Pond in Hatchville for 35 years, and I started coming here in 2008 when we met. This is my first time speaking as a town meeting member. I'm honored, I'm nervous, and I'm filling the unfinished term of making English Braga. If I don't get elected on May 16th, I may end up being one of the shortest-tenured members of town meeting. And I beg, I would ask you, I've worked really hard to keep this as short as I can. If you would be willing to give me six minutes, I'll speak for the six minutes. I won't come back and speak for the other two minutes that I'm allowed to after my four minutes. So I'm asking, you're allowed to speak for four minutes and then speak again for two. I will speak for up to six, and you won't see me appear again on this.
Okay, the question comes on extending the time to six minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
Thank you very much.
The ayes have it by a majority.
Thank you very much. When my son asked me a few days ago what my hopes were for these remarks, I said, I hope people leave town meeting more curious about the issues that I'm highlighting and the questions that I'm asking. I hope that my remarks contribute to increased curiosity about how we are managing our wastewater. And I hope my remarks contribute to a shared commitment from all sectors of our community to protecting our waters, including our freshwater ponds, through sensible, practical, and affordable wastewater management. Regardless of your vote at the close of last night's meeting regarding soil testing for possible windmills in Falmouth Heights, that discussion showed how much passion there is for protecting and preserving Falmouth's beautiful environment and the only planet we've got. We don't get a second chance. Like many of you, I think so often about the world my children and grandchildren are inheriting. Over the past 14 years, and especially in the last five, I have witnessed deterioration on Deep Pond. After helping form the Deep Pond Preservation Project in 2020, in 2022, I founded the Falmouth Pond Coalition, joining forces with other pond residents across town to protect these precious resources. I agonized about my vote on Article 24. I know we need to modernize our wastewater treatment plant, and I understand that searing needs to be part of the mix, particularly in densely populated neighborhoods where there can be some economies of scale. So I have decided to vote yes. But I do not want my yes vote to be interpreted as an endorsement of the wastewater management approach that Falmouth has practiced for many decades. We can and must do better. Instead of trying to limit the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus entering our sewers and septic systems, Falmouth's efforts are focused on remediating and treating the nitrogen and phosphorus after they've already been flushed down the toilet, where they eventually make their way into our waterways. It's like the proverbial bailing water from the boat instead of fixing the hole in the bottom. Contrast this to Falmouth's solid waste management practices, which are focused on prevention, preventing and limiting, limiting what is entering the town's solid waste stream. It's preventative. There are three other points that I want to make. First, searing is wildly expensive. Speaking about Falmouth's capital budget, Peter Johnson Staub recently referred to wastewater as, quote, "the big elephant in the room." 90% of the town's proposed capital projects over the next 10 to 15 years deal with wastewater. That's $265 million, if you think the Alpha Pipe will only cost $57 million. One of the inconvenient truths Peter did not mention is that many of these sewers are likely to be inoperable in 25 to 50 years, since they will be underwater due to sea level rise. Second, the entire searing process is extremely carbon-intensive and self-defeating. Those greenhouse gases in searing are warming the planet and the waters that we are trying to protect with those sewers. Moreover, all of this searing seems to fly in the face of town meeting's unanimous 2020 vote to declare a climate emergency and commit Falmouth to lowering our greenhouse gases. Third, every time we flush urine down the toilet, we are discarding valuable nutrients that are poisoning our waters, nutrients that can easily be recycled as fertilizer, whether on our own properties or given our salt to farmers or gardeners on the Cape and southeastern Massachusetts. Instead of flushing urine down the drain into a sewer or a new $30,000 to $50,000 IA septic system, we could spend less than 5% of that on a new ECHO toilet that looks just like the toilets we have now. The Cinderella toilet incinerates your waste. Another model sends your poo down the sewer and your urine and into your septic and captures your urine and sends it down a tube into a tank in your yard or basement or into a simple in-wall urinal, like the folks at the Green Center have developed. And it's then picked up by a septic company, taken away, pasteurized, given to farmers, sold to farmers. This is referred to at the Mass Tech, folks, as liquid gold. They refer to this as liquid gold. Every man in this room, when we're not at home or at a friend's house, we pee into a urinal. The only place we don't pee into a urinal is in our own house. A lot has happened in the past nine years since Falmouth last explored ECHO toilets. Our environment, especially our waters, have significantly depreciated, deteriorated. More of us feel a greater sense of concern and urgency. The ECHO toilet market is full of new attractive choices, practical and very affordable, with more being developed all the time. I believe Falmouth residents, many Falmouth--
We're at six minutes. Mr. Comart?
Okay, I got 30 seconds. This is my last paragraph.
Quickly.
I believe many Falmouth residents, with the right information, the leadership of the talented people on this stage, and their colleagues in town, the scientists and engineers who live in Falmouth, the right call to action, the right incentives would rise to the challenge and working together create a model for how to sensibly manage wastewater in a coastal community, save money, and protect the waters of our waters and our planet. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Menge? Yeah, you can come down front.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
I might want to just point it up a little.
My name is Hilda Menge, and I live in Precinct 8. And I'm a volunteer board member of the Green Center, a nonprofit research and education organization. We are here because we are very concerned, but also very excited. Concerned about the direction Falmouth is taking regarding the long-term financial health of our town and the greenhouse gas emissions and climate impact of large construction projects such as sewers. But I'm also excited about the new possibilities for reducing pollution and cleaning our waters in a financially and environmentally sustainable way. Recently, Massachusetts Department proposed new regulations required that towns repair watershed permit plans for all watersheds and execute the plans within 20 years to reduce nitrogen loads by 75%. Falmouth has 14 watersheds. We approve those goals. However, meeting these requirements with searing is impossible, unaffordable, and produce huge amounts of emissions. The Massachusetts Department also, DEP, also requires that towns make the most cost-effective, environmentally sound wastewater management plan. Falmouth does not use the most cost-effective and environmentally sound plan. Sewers do not clean the wastewater. They move the wastewater nutrients, heavy metals, PFAS compounds, and all other contaminants from one place to the other, emitting large amounts of greenhouse gases and wasting all nutrients and billions of gallons of potable water in the process. This Article 24 asks for $9.5 million to continue a 40-year, $600 million plan for new sewer projects. A plan that cannot meet DEP requirements in their 20-year timeframe is unaffordable, unsustainable, and destructive to our climate. Most of the costs associated-- sorry. Most of the costs associated with this Article 24 are for replacing 20-year-old equipment. Replacing and rebuilding our new sewer plants every 20 years is unaffordable. We don't have to bankrupt our town and ruin our climate to clean our waters. We can do much better. The goal of Mass DEP is not searing or building sewers. The goal is nitrogen removal from watersheds to reduce water pollution. Let me give you some good numbers here. Urine contains 80% of the nitrogen causing that water pollution. One person produces 120 gallons of urine per year, containing eight pounds of nitrogen. Urine is only 1% of the waste stream, but costs 80% the cost of the searing. It's a tiny amount of the wastewater, but it's what causes all the pollution and what costs all the money for searing. It costs about $300 to $600 to remove one pound of nitrogen from a sewer plant. Keeping urine out of the water is the fastest and cheapest way to reduce water pollution and is the most cost-effective, environmentally sound wastewater management plan available. We propose that some of the money now planned for sewers be used instead for urine diversion infrastructure. Urine diversion infrastructure is simple. It's low-tech, it's inexpensive, durable, reliable, water-saving, nutrient-recycling, hygienic, and most got energy conserving.
Ms. Menge, we're at four minutes. I know you were going to pass the baton there.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. My name is Earl Barnhart, Precinct 8. I'm a volunteer board member of the Green Center. Here are three urine collection fixtures that have become available only in the last few years. The first one is a waterless in-wall urinal. The lid is open for use, but is normally closed. The urine goes into a storage container. The middle one is a waterless unisex urine-only toilet for men and women.
The middle one is a waterless unisex urine-only toilet for men and women. The urine goes into a storage container. The last one is a urine-diverting flush toilet. It operates just like a conventional flush toilet except that the urine is diverted into a storage container. This picture shows an in-wall urinal, because that's the cheapest and fastest solution, connected to a storage container buried outside. When the container is 70% full, it sends a signal to a certified hauler to come and remove it. The hauler takes it to a urine depot where it is pasteurized by heat at a cost of one cent per gallon. Treatment by pasteurization for one person for one year costs $1.20. The pasteurized urine becomes safe to use as fertilizer for any purpose. We think that a pilot project would provide costs and experience with urine diversion methods. We are working with several groups to design a pilot project. The MazTech Alternative Test Center in Sandwich is interested in researching urine diversion. The Falmouth Pond Coalition sees urine diversion as a way to reduce pollution in freshwater ponds. Nutrient Networks is a New England nonprofit with experience installing urine-diverting This pilot project would test urine diversion in 90 homes for two years. Sorry. For two years. It would install two urine in-wall urinals and one other urine-diverting toilet in each house. It would install a storage tank in each house. It would construct a urine depot with a pasteurizer at the Alternative Test Center in Sandwich. The collected urine would be measured and tested to determine the pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus in it. An incentive of $50 per pound of nitrogen would be provided to the property owner totaling $400 per person per year. The goal would be to measure the actual number of pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus removed by watershed and the cost per pound of removal. We estimate that the cost to remove nitrogen by urine diversion would be 1/10 the cost of removing nitrogen by sewer-ing. The additional benefits are water conservation and fertilizer production. Massachusetts DEP requires that towns use the most cost-effective, environmentally sound wastewater management plan. Urine diversion is the most cost-effective, environmentally sound wastewater plan. We hope Falmouth will support a urine diversion pilot project. It is likely that urine diversion will qualify for grant funding from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund as innovative strategies. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nettow.
Good evening, General Nettow, Precinct Nine. I'd like to take this time out to thank our new finance director. I've been here quite a long time, not quite as long as Mr. Dufresne, but close to it. Never have we ever done something of this scale and magnitude of $900,000. Finding these funds, they weren't lost. They're there. I spoke about this last night. And I spoke to you last night saying that I think we're taking a new direction. If you look on page 18 and look at the sums, they come up to $900,000, and look at the dates that we passed these, this money's been sitting there for a while. Mr. Santo, I thank you. The taxpayers of the town of Falmouth, thank you. Because this cost to pay for this sewer plant improvement just got lessened by $900,000. And I think that deserves a round of applause. I thank you. Thank you, sir.
Further discussion on Article 24. Hearing another question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it by a majority. Article 25. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator. Point of order. We do need a two-thirds vote.
It's a two-thirds vote, and I so declare.
Thank you.
We can do that in a statute. And it says right here, two-thirds on my notes, too. Okay, the next one's borrowing, so it's two-thirds as well. 25, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 25 as recommended for a two-thirds Town Meeting vote.
Okay, as recommended. And I think we had a slide for this.
Actually, can you-- never mind. Let's just switch to this for a moment. Hello, I'm Amy Lowell. I'm the town's wastewater superintendent. I need to start by making a small correction to the explanation for Article 25. The last sentence of the article says that $1.7 million in ARPA, which stands for American Rescue Plan Act Funds, will be available to offset this cost. That was an error. The $1.7 million in ARPA funds was used for the design of the wastewater treatment facility improvements project that was covered in Article 24. This change, this correction in the explanation, does not affect the funding plan for the article. The funds for this project will be borrowed within the levy limit, and no tax increase will be required. Article 25 is the next step in the town's plan to improve water quality in our ponds, in our coastal ponds. This is the project the town's been working towards since we completed the sewer project to improve water quality in Little Pond. Great Pond is the next pond east of Little Pond and is severely impacted by nitrogen primarily from septic systems. Article 25 is the recommended plan in the Great Pond, was the recommended plan in the Great Pond targeted watershed management plan that the town sent to the state in December of 2022 and which the state approved in January of this year. Article 25 asks for $4.5 million to fund the design and permitting of the infrastructure that's shown on the overhead. What you can see on the overhead is a wastewater collection system for the area shown in red, which that's the sewer service area, includes the northeast portion of Maravista, which was not sewered in the Little Pond project, and the T-Ticket Path Peninsula. It also includes design and permitting for the lift stations and the force main to convey that wastewater treatment, wastewater to the existing wastewater treatment plant, and it includes expansion of the town's existing northernmost discharge beds. Again, the design and permitting of those northernmost discharge beds. The schedule for this project is designed over the next year, and we plan to come back in April of 2024 to request the funds to construct this expansion. The estimate at this point is $55 million for that construction project. Obviously, that estimate will be refined through the design process. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, discussion on Article 25. Mr. Noonan.
I just heard the figure of $55 million to sewer that area. I have not heard any discussion about dredging to get the nitrates flowing better. I think before the town comes back to us for $55 million, we need to know what it's going to cost to dredge and to dredge the ponds before we approve this kind of money for sewer-ing. Thank you.
Ms. Lowell.
Just briefly, the Massachusetts estuaries project, when they came up with the nitrogen limits for each of the coastal ponds, did evaluate inlet widening as an option to improve water quality, and they determined that only for Bourne's Pond and Little Pond would the widening of inlets be a significant enough impact to be worth considering. The town is moving forward with inlet widening for Bourne's Pond, though admittedly, that is taking a long time due to permitting. For dredging has many useful purposes, but it will not solve the nitrogen problem in the coastal ponds.
Okay, Ms. Menge.
My name is Hilda Menge, Precinct Eight. I'm here again because I'm very concerned about the direction Falmouth is taking regarding the financial health of this town and the health of our climate. Planning to use only sewers is unaffordable, unsustainable, and wasteful in every single aspect. To avoid-- to avoid catastrophe, human societies have 12 years to completely transform the way we use energy, natural resources, water, and land. In 2018, the UN IPCC said these words. Now we have only seven years left. The clock is ticking, and it has only gotten worse in the meantime. Stop that waste. Sewers waste enormous amounts of energy, all the natural resources of nutrients, and billions and billions of gallons of potable water. To avoid catastrophe, we have to change now, not in seven years, but now. So I'm asking you, please vote no on Article 25, because that is just the gateway for the next step of $70 million of sewer-ing. Okay, they said 55, but by in a few years, it's not going to be 55. That's what they said last year. It was not going to be 24, and with one year, it's $9.5 million more. We don't have to build more sewers to reduce our water pollution. We really don't. Urine diversion infrastructure is the most cost-effective, quickest, environmentally sound, and sustainable way to reduce our water pollution. Just think about it. This $4.5 million worth of designing can install, which is for only 811 homes, that money could pay for all the infrastructure, urine infrastructure needed for the same 811 homes, save millions gallons of water, and produce EPA Class A fertilizers for the money only for that design. "It's dirt-cheap," said one of the Water Quality Management Committee members recently. Some town members here, sitting right here, recently said the following things about cost of the sewer-ing. Insanity. It's going to bankrupt our town. Unsustainable. People won't be able to afford here, to live here. Insane. And then the one, the elephant in the room. My reply actually is, it's not the elephant in the room, it's only the tip of the nose that's in the room. The rest is still coming, hundreds of millions of dollars, on and on for years. We cannot sewer our way out of our pollution crisis. Managing our wastewater should not bankrupt us and should not destroy our climate at the same time. Please think about it. Vote no on Article 25. We have plenty of time. It takes 20, 2.5 years to even construct all the money that they have now for all their changes. We have time. Let's try something else. Stop spending money on sewer design that leads to another $70 million of sewer-ing. And more sewer-ing after, and more sewer-ing. Instead, give pee a chance. Your kids and the world will thank you. But if you really, really want to, and you really, really love flushing your human waste into energy-gossling, resource-wasting sewers, more than a livable climate, food security, and an equitable economy for all, please vote yes on Article 25. And then go home and tell your children you voted for wasting energy, resources, and water, and for increasing global warming over their sustainable future.
Okay, Ms. Shepherd.
We hope-- I have one more sentence. We hope Falmouth will support this urine diversion pilot project soon, and if-- but there's no reason for anybody to wait. You can take action right now on your own. Your action now can stop polluting your watershed ponds and your watershed estuaries. Take action now. If you want more information, please contact us, and we will try to help you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Shepherd.
Just look at the big picture a little more. She mentioned before 14 watersheds. Those 14 watersheds are our estuaries. Falmouth has 14 estuaries. That is more estuaries than any other town on the East Coast. It's astonishing, and we are polluting the heck out of every single one, and we have no other place to go. Yes, we can build these sewers, but it doesn't solve our problem. And I, when I first moved to town in '72, we lived in West Falmouth, right on the harbor, and all the things that we had available to us then there, I never got my scallop permit because people would scolup like crazy for three days, and then they'd start leaving them off at your house, the same as they do with zucchini now. It was a great thing. Anyway, that's not there anymore. Our estuaries are becoming incredibly polluted. We're not going to stop peeing and pooping, folks, so we have to address this in a bigger-picture way. And the whole business of urine-diverting toilets has changed a great deal since we first heard about composting toilets. You actually can have those in your house now and not have to apologize for them. I'm just saying that in the big picture, we need to look a little farther than building the next sewer and maybe thinking about the alternatives. Thank you.
Ms. Azendorf.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, Martha Azendorf, Precinct Six, and I live in West Falmouth. I live actually on a little area called Oyster Pond, which looks like a teardrop at the bottom of West Falmouth Harbor on the west side there. Woodwell Climate Research Center and the Buzzards Bay Coalition, both are against this Article 25. It takes waste from one side of town and empties it into the other side of town. In this Buzzards Bay Coalition booklet that just came out recently, about 70 estuaries all around Buzzards Bay that they monitor, Snug Harbor, West Falmouth is the third worst in the entire Buzzards Bay. I have lived in West Falmouth for 42 years, since 1981. I used to eat blue crabs from Oyster Pond. When the bike path was built, you could see blue crabs from the large deck on kind of the swan pond. The blue crabs were kind of scrabbling over there under it all the time. Now there is lettuce-like seaweed algae that covers the bottom. The water is cloudy, there are no crabs at all. People forget that these estuaries are tidal. They only drain for half the day. Many of the boats in West Falmouth Harbor are pointed toward the current, they're not pointed toward the wind at their moorings. The water from the tides comes into the harbor. It holds any seepage from the wastewater treatment plant right where it is. It forces it back into these estuaries. It forces it under the Chappaquaet Bridge into Oyster Pond, into these little corners like Snug Harbor. like Snug Harbor. It's tidal. And I just want you to say that any addition of nitrogen to this West Falmouth Harbor, to Herring Brook further up to the back end of Old Silver Beach, is just taking waste from one part of the town and putting it in the other. We can't handle anymore. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Turkington.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Turkington, Precinct One, Chairman of the Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee. 12 years ago, when this committee was formed, a town meeting had a major debate about where we wanted to go with wastewater. And one of the principal elements of that debate was Hilda and Earl presenting us with the vision that they continued to share of a sewer-free world, where your waste can be handled in your house or in a bucket, in your basement, or wherever. Our committee took that seriously at that time. We created a program around eco-toilets, which is what they called them at the time. We sent a mailing out to everybody in town, saying, "We will give you $5,000 if you will install one of these eco-toilets." 155 people came back and said, "Yes, we're interested in this." We went to the state plumbing board to get a special permit to allow these things to be installed in Falmouth. We offered everybody in the sewer service area in the Heights and Mary Vista, "You paid no betterment if you put one of these things in. You just save yourself $13,000, and we'll give you $5,000." Guess how many people took advantage of that $18,000 offer? None. Nobody did it. Out of the 155, we hired contractors to go to their house. We provided every service you could provide to encourage these folks to install these things. Out of the 155 people in Falmouth who were interested enough to go through that process, nine of them put them in their houses, and two of them pulled them out. Okay? This technology, so-called, is not ready for prime time. Nowhere in Massachusetts has it ever been adopted. You can't find a place in the country where a community has adopted it. They speak now recently about urine-diverting toilets. And they say, "Well, there's a town, Burlington or Barrington, someplace in Vermont, where this is actually in place." Well, I looked it up, and I spent some time researching what actually is going on in that community. 150 people in that community collect their urine in a bucket in their house, and they take it to a center, and the center treats it. And then they try to make fertilizer out of it, except the state of Maine won't allow that kind of fertilizer, because it has PCBs, so they're having a little trouble finding people to use it. The point being, it's a dream that is not sustainable, and here we are 12 years later talking about it. What we should be talking about, which is the article, is how do we move ahead with the plan that Falmouth put together over these last few years? And that plan is this. We try every kind of alternative that anybody suggests, and we test it out. We did that in this town. We have permeable reactive barriers. We found how they work. We have innovative alternative septic systems. We're finding how they work. We have been leading the way in this town on finding alternatives to sewer. But we all knew, and even the earlier speaker said this is true, on the peninsula where you have houses close together, alternatives are not going to do it, that you really, in some cases, you have to sewer. So we went to the most impacted estuaries first, and the most densely populated neighborhoods first, the Heights and Mary Vista. We sewed 1,600 houses there. The betterment was $435 a year. The pond is already showing signs of improvement. That was our first project. The next project...
Mr. Turkington, we're at four minutes. I'll put you back on the list to come back.
Well, let me just wind up here. The article before us is to go ahead with the next stage of what this town is committed to doing. I'd like to address the West Falmouth piece that was just raised by the lady over here, but I can wait to do that when you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Duffany.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Duffany, Precinct Six. I have a question that I'm hoping that Amy can help us with, Ms. Lowell can help us with, and that's, if it's appropriate to ask, and that's, where are we going to be heading with the next generation, if you will, of sewer, which is going to be the outfall pipe, which 40 years ago, you know, we voted down, and now it's back? And my concern is that we're probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of half a billion dollars in the direction that we're going, doing the sewer and putting it out in West Falmouth. And if we're going to turn around and bring it to an outfall pipe, you know, what is the timetable for that? Maybe this is necessary. Maybe we don't have a choice. I do have concerns about the continued moving north and what it does to the west side because of the flow of the water. But if we're going to be heading in the outfall pipe direction, I'd like some education on that so that I can understand that what I'm voting for tonight may be just money down the toilet. Thank you.
Ms. Lowell.
Thank you, Mike. Then, you're asking about timeframe and specifically about an outfall option. The next, excuse me, the next phase of sewer beyond the area I'm showing here would be Acapescot, further to the east, the Acapescot Peninsula. And then we do plan additional sewer in the watersheds to Green Pond and Waco Bay after that. However, the expanded discharge area that we've identified here cannot handle flow beyond the service area where we've identified now and the Acapescot Peninsula. Beyond that, we will need additional discharge area. Siting treated wastewater discharge is the most difficult part of wastewater system expansion. So, and land-based discharge does have its challenges. The town has, because of those challenges, the town has expressed support for, initial support for an outfall, and the Water Quality Management Committee and the Department of Public Works have begun to pursue an outfall using the support that we've gained already. The outfall, however, is not a guaranteed solution. There is an enormous amount of work that will have to be done to collect data, evaluate that data, do modeling of the discharge sites, go through all the permitting processes, and the public discussion that's necessary to do that. So I can't give you a definitive timeframe for an outfall, but I can say that we have begun that process, and we are very seriously pursuing it as, using the guidance or the feedback that we've gotten from the town. That is our next step, but I cannot say definitively how long it will take.
Mr. Brown.
Hi, Doug Brown. I was on the original Wastewater Plan Review Committee. I've been following this issue for a long time. I think we need to support Article 25, but at the same time, we need to pursue the idea of the urine-diverting toilets, because I find it to be very promising. I was one of the contractors who tried to go around and convince people to use the composting toilets. They were big and bulky, and it was not practical for a lot of people to put in. But the urine-diverting toilet with the flush feature, I find it to be very promising. It's very easy to, I would think it's going to be very easy to remodel into your house. We don't know yet, but I want to look into it. We've got to remember that the sewer currently planned is just immediately in the estuary areas, but the watersheds extend way up into the upper part of the town. We don't want to sewer all those areas. We're going to have to find ways to control the nitrogen in those areas as well. So the urine-diverting, I think, will probably help us in those areas, but I certainly want to support Article 25 and keep our planning moving forward until we come up with a substitute, which we're not quite there yet, but I hope we find it.
Okay. Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, 98 grand. I'm actually not a town meeting member, but obviously I am a taxpayer. And I'd like just to add to this, Mr. Johnson Staub's comment of the elephant in the room, which is absolutely true, but there's another elephant in the room as well, which is our water pipes. They're in horrible condition. They need to be replaced, and that will need to start before we ever complete this sewer project, this one or the next one or whatever. It's an immediate need. So I think to not explore the option of urine diversion is just the wrong road to go down. As Mr. Brown stated, it's completely true. There's certainly going to be areas in town where this can be used, and its effect would be immediate. And I know from experience, and I have an award hanging on my wall to prove it, you can use the stuff to grow a hell of a nice flower bed. And I just think it should be looked at. It's not a lot of money, and the future is very expensive. Any way we can reduce it or investigate how to reduce it, maybe it'll be proven wrong, but I extremely doubt it. The people that are looking forward, are looking at putting these IA systems in, what are they going to be, $55,000? I mean, if you could do something for $5,000, the way people are getting priced out of this town and out of Cape Cod, I just implore people to at least look at this. It is a viable option. Thank you. And thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Patrick.
Matt Patrick, Precinct Seven. I wanted to talk about the UD toilets a little bit more. We have had them in our house, three of them, for 12 years now. And something we often forget, I mean, we're doing all the sewer for our coastal estuaries and ponds, but we're not doing anything for our freshwater ponds. Remember that. And there are a lot of people who live around those ponds, and they're seeing those ponds go to hell, just like our coastal estuaries are. And it's because of the same thing. We don't have any plans to do anything for these freshwater ponds. It seems to me that this would be a perfect place to do some kind of project in concert with our county wastewater people, who are very willing to get involved and do the testing. I want to say that, you know, our toilets were quirky, but we did figure out how to get them to work properly over, you know, within a few years after getting them. And again, Mr. Moderator, if I could move that amend this article to add, or to take $500,000 from the total and use it for a pilot program for freshwater ponds in concert with county testing.
So that would be beyond the scope of this article? You could make a reduction, and then you'd have to come at a future town meeting with an article to appropriate something that's outside of the scope of the posted article?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Turkington.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Moving on now toward the article that's before us. A number of you have gotten correspondence, I know, from the Association for the Preservation of Cape Cod urging you to vote in favor of this article. And I know you've gotten some correspondence from the David Dow, spokesman for the Sierra Club, urging you to vote for this article, and we thank them for that. You've also gotten a letter from the Buzzards Bay Coalition opposing the article, and I want to address that. The Buzzards Bay Coalition has been a good partner and a good friend of this town in many instances. 30 innovative alternative systems were put into West Falmouth under a program by this town with them as a partner. And the legislation that actually allowed outfalls was put forth by this town and supported by the Buzzards Bay Coalition. So we can be good friends when we want to. But they're great advocates. And as we talk about an outfall, and this is just the beginning of talking about an outfall, but our committee is unanimously supporting the idea. And needless to say, the Buzzards Bay Coalition, once they heard it was going to be in Vineyard Sound, they support the idea and very enthusiastically. So, but like good advocates, they always want more. So we're coming to the town now and saying, "We want to do a collection system for T-Ticket. If you're going to do a collection system, you have to have a discharge site." And we're saying, "The discharge site that the DE approved for this town five years ago has the capacity to take more. It has the capacity to take enough more for the next five to 10 years so that we can move ahead with an outfall." An outfall really is the answer to everything, because it takes extremely well-treated wastewater. I mean, it's down to like 95% of the nitrogen is gone, and everything else is gone. It puts it out in a place where the currents make it disappear within a couple hundred feet.
Okay. Mr. Turkington? Time's expired.
It's a four-minute problem. It's getting to a problem.
Let's see. Mr. Comart?
Just a couple of points. First of all, I encourage you to read Eric Turkington's column in last Friday's Enterprise about sea level rise and the disappearance of our beaches and coastline. I commend you to read his column. There used to be this phrase in this country that we heard a lot about. It's called "Drill, baby, drill." Because we never thought there was an alternative to using oil. Everything was drill, baby, drill. This has similar sounds, sewer, baby, sewer. Why don't we just stop putting our urine, at least, into these systems? We take a little bit of urine, we put it in a gallon and a half of water, and we put it into our toilets and down into our septic systems and sewers. Now we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars to reverse that process. Come on. In regard to this issue that I keep hearing about what happened nine years ago, whatever it was, my mother used to say, "There's three sides to every story." One story in this town is, we made a great effort to get people in this town to try a different kind of toilet. They were composting toilets. It didn't work. What they're not saying is that you supported $500,000 being spent on that initiative. After spending $190,000 of it, they pulled the plug. Pulled the plug. $310,000 was never spent on that initiative. They gave up. They were supposed to hire an outside consultant to do this. They hired an in-town person to manage that project who really did not believe in all this. The effort, with all due respect, could have been much better. So anyway, there's another story that this was well-done, there's a story it wasn't well-done. The truth is probably, like my mother said, somewhere in the middle. We have 28 great ponds in ponds in Falmouth, they're all deteriorating. You want to see a deteriorating freshwater pond in Falmouth? Go to Cedar Lake in July. Go to Cedar Lake, you can almost walk across Cedar Lake. A house there that was worth a million dollars five years ago, if you go there in July, you wouldn't pay more than five hundred thousand dollars for that house. This is going to affect our property values, everyone who lives on or around a pond. I just, I just think with all these tens and hundreds of millions of dollars, we're not hearing anything from the wastewater quality management committee, which by the way says we have nothing to do with freshwater ponds. Our freshwater ponds have no town body that feels responsible for helping us and managing us. We have no, we have no town body that's responsible for helping the freshwater ponds. Maybe expand the purview of the Water Quality Management Committee, or create a freshwater pond committee in this town. I mean, we're like nowhere. Anyway, I just think all this is short-sighted, and I think we gotta, we don't have a lot of time. We're destroying all of our waters in this town. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think it's Mr. Zweig. Is that, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ron Zweig, Precinct One. And just a little bit, I was a member of this body for about ten years, and also served for ten years on the Water Quality Management Committee. So there's a little, a little bit there in which I'm talking about. But I think that the first thing is that technologies have changed, and the innovative and alternative septic systems are relatively new, and they're being, they do some, they can have some effects, they're not the best technology, but that's something new that the town's exploring and actually testing in various areas. So that's one thing. So when we come to the urine diverting side of things, especially the in-home urinals, I think I have a rhetorical question that I can ask, but you don't need to answer, just for the men. How many of you have ever used a urinal? I mean, this is not a new technology, right? I mean, it's like, you know, it's basically, and that's really enough, and in many cases, I think we'll find through the studies, that just diverting that urine is adequate, although women can participate as well, of course, with other technology. But that is a question. There are also waterless urinals that I think many, many men at least have, have, have had experience with. So I think that this is a very important element in this, and things have changed. And I think that when it comes to, at this meeting, I think over the years, I don't know how many times we heard the phrase, you know, you're putting the cart before the horse. Well, that's come off quite often, and I think we have a case here where that is the case, that we really need to look at these, this particular urine diverting alternative, and put the horse before the cart. I think it's time, it's time now, this is a good time to really get things organized in a way where that can, where that can happen. And I think that, that one thing is, and it's been spoken of also in this meeting many times, on many of the articles concerning financing, can low-income households afford tax increases? And they seem minimal, but they keep building up. Now, this, the Article Twenty-Four, as you know, increased, the cost increased by forty, forty percent in one year. Now, one of the former town managers about ten years ago calculated how to finance this sewer program, by using all of the retired debt for new borrowing, and therefore there would be no tax increase. And that was the plan. Well, this new thing with the forty percent increase suddenly on one component is something. The sewer outfall was not even in the plan, and that's another fifty-five to eighty million dollars. So it's like, that's an addition. And so if things are increasing with all of these programs, we're going to be in that element. Now also, with regard to Buzzards Bay, comments about Buzzards Bay Coalition by, by former speaker and colleague on the Water Management Committee, they are, yes, in supportive of the outfall, but in Vineyard Sound, not in Buzzards Bay, but they're opposed to the site that, that was cited, that was built, because it would, it would draw more nitrogen, more, more nutrients into Buzzards Bay. So that site, that's what they're opposed to, is what this project is designed, is targeted to use. So that's, that's an important correction, I think, about that. So I think the main thing here is that we need to look ahead and think about where these costs are going, and if there is a more cost-effective solution that we can explore and test and find out, it's time to vote no on this for now, and, and, and find out really if there's a better way putting the horse before the cart.
Okay, Mr. Zweig.
Thank you.
We're at for Mr. Keefe.
Brian Keefe, Precinct Four. Move to call the question.
Okay, we have a motion to close discussion, requires two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chairs, the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question will come on the main motion. As recommended, this requires a two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Let's cue up a slide. All those in favor of Article Twenty-Five, as recommended, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. By a count of vote of one hundred and six in favor and seventy-nine opposed, the necessary two-thirds is not attained. Article Twenty-Eight.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
Sir, notice of reconsideration.
Notice of reconsideration has been served. Article Twenty-Eight.
Mr. Moderator, the recommendation on this article has changed. It was originally as recommended. The Finance Committee has voted to, we move indefinite postponement for Article Twenty-Eight, and I believe there's, someone wants to talk to this.
Okay, yeah.
Good evening. Mike Righetto, Acting Water Superintendent.
Can't, they just can't hear you speaking. Yeah. He's an employee, so we've done a blanket vote. Yeah, nope, could catch though. But if you're a town employee, we authorize that at the beginning of the meeting.
Just better. Mike Righetto, Acting Water Superintendent. We've had a lot of discussions with the Air Force recently about reactivation of the Asshurmit Well, and right now we do not have a written agreement in place, and there is not a consensus on where this project will go in terms of funding. They have committed to paying for the majority of this project, but there's a chance there could be a small portion put on the town for the reactivation of the well, but the treatment aspect would be fully covered. So we're asking for indefinite postponement, so we can have a written agreement in place and then come back.
Excellent. You've all heard the main motion, indefinite postponement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Madam Chairman, Number Twenty-Nine, classification plan.
Mr. Moderator, the recommendation for Article Twenty-Nine has changed. I move indefinite postponement on Article Twenty-Nine.
Okay, Article Twenty-Nine, we already did the reclassification, so the main motion now is indefinite postponement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by majority. Article Thirty-Two. Article Thirty-Two is a new main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Thirty-Two as printed on a handout or slide.
Okay, is there anyone, any town meeting member that didn't get Article Thirty-Two handout last night of the new language? Where they were handing them out last night when you came in, we're going to put a slide up, but there's also a handout. Stand up if you do not have a handout for Article Thirty-Two as a town meeting member. Oh, they handed them out tonight. Okay. They told me they were going to hand them out last night. So whatever, if you'd, anybody not have the, the handout? Okay, I need, I need two handouts in the back right. I need two in the back right and three in the back left. She printed two-hundred-and-forty, and we have a hundred-and-eighty-some-odd folks on the quorum call, so I don't know what happened. Okay, well, it's going to be on the slide if, if the, the last three or four folks that don't have one, if you could.
Mr. Moderator?
Pair up with a, a partner. Yeah.
I'd like to recognize Wastewater Superintendent Amy Lowell.
Yeah. I just want to make sure everybody has access to the motion. We've got a couple folks that might need to pair up, and we're going to go through a couple of slides. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hello. I know nobody likes to have a new main motion at town meeting. I don't like it either, and I'm sorry to have to do that. We were in negotiations and discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection until last week, and at which time we resolved language for our flow-neutral bylaw that would meet the state's requirements for a zero percent interest loan. The change, the change to the flow-neutral bylaw is very, is very straightforward in the end. Really, what the state wanted in or as a, as a criteria for the zero percent interest loan for the wastewater treatment facility improvement project was that the flow-neutral bylaw, number one, refer to the, specifically to the town's targeted watershed management plan that was approved by the state in January, sent to the town, or sent to the state in December of 2022. They wanted a specific reference to that, and then they wanted the exact language of the bylaw, the flow allocations within the bylaw to match exactly the way the, the flow allocations were described in that plan. So unfortunately, the way this article is written, it's written, the same changes to the bylaw are written three different ways within the, the original art, within the original article. And so it was way too complicated and confusing to go and try to show the changes from that warrant article to the current version. So instead, what you have handed, you were handed out, and what I emailed to all town meeting members late last week, was a, a replacement motion for the Article Thirty-Two. And that shows the changes from the current bylaw that are proposed for this town meeting. The flow-neutral bylaw could use some additional work. That is, the flow-neutral bylaw could use some work streamlining it. We will need to come back. That is, that is a significant undertaking that we'll need to come back to town meeting for in a future date. This article is just to change the wording to meet the state's requirements for a zero percent interest loan for the wastewater treatment facility improvement project. There are, there, because the language is presented three different ways in the original article, it is four slides to go over all of that. But that is what is, the four slides are what are shown in your handout.
Okay, discussion on Article Thirty-Two. In the aisle, did you, are you down here to speak on this one? Ms. Megan, are you, are you speaking on this, or? You're waiting for what? No, okay. All right, hearing no discussion, the question will come on the main motion as printed in the handout and on the slide. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article Thirty-Three. Madam Chair of the Board of Selectmen for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Thirty-Three as printed.
As printed, this is deleting the stable regulations bylaw. Who held this one? Joe, did you hold this one? No. Can't blame this one on Joe. Anyone, anyone want to speak on Article Thirty-Three? Yeah, in the back. Mr. Donahue? Can't see in the shadow over there.
John Waterbury, Precinct One, member of the Board of Health. We, for the past year, had troubles that the bylaw that we're replacing was written in nineteen-seventy-one, it needed to be updated. It turned out to be simpler to do that through a Board of Health regulation. We've been working on the Board of Health for about a year in conjunction with the Falmouth Agricultural Commission and others to develop a bylaw, and if we eliminate, a regulation. So if we eliminate the, the old bylaw, we will be having public hearings on the draft that we've put together for a new stable regulation run through the Board of Health.
Okay, any further discussion on Article Thirty-Three? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it by a majority. Article Thirty-Five. Madam Chair for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Thirty-Five as printed.
As printed, this is to authorize the Board, Select Board to grant easements for N-Star at the municipal parking lot in Depot Ave. Discussion on Article Thirty-Five. Mr. Latimer.
Richard Latimer, Precinct One. I just wanted to ask the Selectmen, what consideration did they give to the effect of the underground cables that the, when Eversource is going to install on the neighborhoods, Simpson Lane, Green Gate, and the surrounding neighborhoods to where those underground cables bringing power out to the island? What consideration was given to that? What complaints did they get from those neighborhoods about their concerns about the adverse effects of living so close to underground cables? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Johnson.
So this, this easement was part of the larger project that the town negotiated a memorandum of understanding with Eversource and received consideration of eight hundred thousand dollars. So this is an amendment to that existing project. It's a different form of that same easement, so there's no additional consideration for this particular change to the easement.
Oh, yes, but did you get any information from them about how the underground cables were going to affect the surrounding neighborhoods? Did you ask for that?
We did review the project with them in detail. We did review the project with them in detail in terms of what the route was gonna look like, and, and we have a detailed agreement that addresses how the construction is done and how, how that is going to be mitigated. So yes, there, there were extensive negotiations.
You specifically looked at the amount of voltage that was going through there and how that might be perceived by the neighborhoods, is that what you're saying?
We did not get a lot of, a lot of input from the neighborhood about the, the voltage.
And therefore you didn't ask, thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 35? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Article 36, this is a community preservation committee article. Chair of the Community Preservation Committee for the main motion? A member of the Community Preservation Committee for the main motion?
I recommend Article 36 as recommended.
Okay, as recommended, this is to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from undesignated fund balance to restore the Upper Coonamessett River. Discussion on Article 36? Somebody held this. Joe, was it you?
Yeah.
Any discussion on Article 36? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Article 38. Ms. Cuny from the Community Preservation Committee.
Sandra Cuny, Vice Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. I recommend Article 38 as recommended.
As recommended, this is to appropriate the sum of $577,076 from fiscal 24 community preservation estimated revenues to continue the rehabilitating the exterior building features of the Edward Marks Building.
I question the historic value of this building, which was once the PDO's tavern that was moved in town and became the poorhouse, which housed the people that were sleeping outside Well, you buried the dead right next door, they moved all the, all the hoes. My, my problem with what is the original or ultimate purpose of spending the kind of money that we're spending? Is it gonna be used as some kind of functional town building? The building is in terrible shape. I've gone through it back when I was in office, and so I questioned the $577,000. Is this like the first step of a total interior remodeling? Could I get an answer for that question? Is, is there anybody here that is on that committee? It's, it's gonna be O Supervisor in the work?
Yep, Mr. Duffany? Oh, or Mr. Stone? I get three people that want to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Duffany, Precinct Six. Mr. Dufresne, the, there's been some substantial renovations that have already taken place in the building that a lot of folks may or may not be aware of that was, that was done in the last 20 years, okay? The, there was a lot of structural, they started with a structural piece of it, and they, they've got the building so that it, it, you know, that it's, it's in really, it's in decent shape in terms of the structure. That said, it's still in somewhat original condition on the inside, and that is where there is a historic preservation on the inside. So when you look at the big picture and you look at, as you pointed out, this building being the oldest municipal building, I believe, in the town of Falmouth.
What cut, what is that?
I believe this is the oldest municipally-owned building in the town of Falmouth.
Yes.
And so this, this'll, there's a lot, actually, of pride that goes into the fact that this building has been preserved up till this time, albeit marginally at best. And so the committee, there was a committee that was assigned to try to rehab this building so it could be used, I believe, for the human services at the time. That said, we undertook, I'm on the, I was, I'm on the committee with a number of other folks that have undertaken an interior preservation study of the building, which then also brought in the exterior of the building. And if you look closely at the building and understand some of the historic attributes of the construction of the building, it, it's been compromised, I wanna be careful with what I say, because it has been compromised over years in order to save money to maintain the building. It has aluminum gutters on that, on some parts of it, the, the trim detail, it completely needs to be redone. We put a roof on the building a few years ago, that was kind of an aside, if you will, to what the committee was doing, it was not something that we were in favor of because we wanted to restore the exterior of the building to its proper nature before we put on the proper roofing material, which was a wood roof. It's not an asphalt roof like it has today. That said, we also have, one of the members of the committee is, has actually, over, over the last 10 so years, restored all of the double-hung windows in that building, taken out the sash one by one, rebuilt the sash, put them back in, so they are all, you know, of the historic nature that they were. So this whole study and so forth brought forth, you know, the portico need to be redone, there was, you know, there's no fencing around it to make it look like it used to. There's a whole bunch of attributes to the building that are totally missing, that it's gonna cost a ton of money, as you can see, to bring this building back to, to what the town could be proud of as one of its oldest municipally-owned buildings in the town. You know, the, the alternative is not pretty, and I, I would suggest that we consider restoring the building. It's there, it's been there, I don't believe it's gonna go anywhere, I don't know what the future use of it may be, but it was used. It, you know, it was used, I believe, by, I wanna say the RMV used it for a while. So anyways, I don't wanna belabor this, but, you know, there, there was a lot of merit, and we struggled amongst ourselves to come to grips with what the right thing to do with this building is. So I'm happy to try to answer any other questions people might have.
My, my concern is an investment of $577,000. What, that's gonna take care of all the problems that we're looking at every, every day when we go by it. But what is the ultimate use, in your eyes, for that building? Are they gonna use the second floor, which, which was condemned? The, the foundation was condemned back when I was in office.
Well, that, that is, that's actually on the list. The foundation is structurally sound, the, it needs to be repointed, you know, a lot of the parting and the joints has come out and so forth, so that, that does need to be done. If you open the bulkhead, you wouldn't walk down the stairs, you'll, you'll hit the bottom of the first step. I mean, there's just, you know, it has some deficiencies in the building that are, you know, serious deficiencies. But again, the alternative is to remove the building, I don't think that that's really on the table. But that's not for me. We were directed through the administration of the town to come up with what we've come up with, with plans to, it's, and this has been painful and long, because it's a very detailed, it's a very detailed report that we worked with, and we're also working with a building that has already been renovated in some ways that we don't agree with, and that the historic nature of the interior of the building, where the preservation exists, you know, it's somewhat been compromised, and it needs to be, if we're gonna do this, we need to do it right. The other piece of it, just to understand, is that we're not gonna hire a local, a local contractor to go in there at, at the rate that you are gonna pay as a homeowner, we're gonna be paying the, you know, the prevailing rate. So that in itself adds a tremendous amount to this, you know, to the price of this project. And that's out of all of our hands, I believe, because of the, you know, the nature of the holding of the building.
Thank you. Fellow town meeting members, my concern is the expenditure of $577,000 for a building that was once called the PDO's tavern, it was used for the indigent people that didn't have a place to sleep. And what will the building ultimately be used for? Are we gonna try to make more municipal space in a building that's a total derelict? I, I have some serious concerns with no explanation of the $577,000. I, I go by the building all the time, and I, I feel with the, we've cheated the historical significance of that building, which was the PDO's tavern. And anyway, it's...
Mr. Dufresne, I think we...
I'll keep my eye on it.
I think we might have an answer here.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, say.
So I, I do just, it, it was mentioned, but I do want to reiterate, I do wanna reiterate that there is a, a municipal use for the first floor, so the Human Services Department is going to move into the first floor. The second, a use for the second floor is more problematic, because in order to make it accessible, it would require an elevator and an addition, that's not part of this $575,000, this $575 is just to restore the exterior. But I, I just wanted to make sure it was clear to town meeting that at least for the first floor, there is a municipal use plan.
But it's not clear, and I'm glad that you spoke up, because it's not clear under this $577,000 that it ultimately could be a million-plus occupational, which never should be asked for to start with. The building is not suitable for human habitation, except for the, the one office space that's been there since they did that minor remodeling. But right now, that building and the interior is in tough shape, and I would hate to see this investment of $577,000. First of all, let's put a sign out there that's PDO's Tavern, it's not the Eddie Marks Building.
Okay, Dr. Schneider.
Barbara Schneider, Precinct Four. Sometime between 2006 and 2013, when I was on the Community Preservation Committee, we brought this project to town meeting, and at that time, we had all the same concerns. We had, we actually had a thorough investigation done of the building, we came up with the, the whole realization that the second floor was not gonna be able to be used, it was never gonna be cost-effective to get it to that point, and that what we were best off doing was getting it shored up enough on the outside to look decent and usable on the inside, and I do believe it was the Department of Motor Vehicles that was gonna use it, and I believe we even might have sold...
It was actually the, the Falmouth Retirement Board.
Yes, okay.
And then they were gonna sue the town, the RMV never got here, but they wanted to come.
Yeah, they wanted to come. And so I just wanna say that like Andy, I feel always concerned when I see this project on the warrant, because I feel like we got into a spiral, dumping a lot of money into a building that at some point should have been admitted it was just not worth saving. And I'm sorry to say that, I love all our historical things, this one's really hard for me to feel it's worth the money.
Mr. Chair? Andy, I'll put you back on the list if you wanna just...
Well, Dan Chair, Precinct Six. Sorry it took so long, did you get up at 85? It's a problem. But this building should be very valuable to this town, and we've demolished it, we have spent, and I must say, at least a million dollars on it so far, and then our last town manager overturned it into a warehouse, which destroyed the inside. But it is, I think it's worth saving. We're a tourist in town, it shouldn't be a employee's office building, it should be a little museum of what Falmouth was and is. And I really think it should be saved, but if we're not gonna use it as a tourist attraction, I'm afraid it should be torn down. It won't be a good office, it's gonna be a mess. You need an elevator. Rent it, or to somebody that wants to put a nice little store in there, but do something and fix it, and not fix it up, let them do it. But, but for Pete's sake, don't spend all this money for a office building. Thank you.
Ms. Fenwick, you're on the list. It's Ms. Fenwick.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct One. I would like to remind town meeting that this building was put on the National Register of Historic Places in 1998. You can't tear it down.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Michael Stone, Precinct Six, and Financial Officer for the Community Preservation Committee. A few of the considerations for the committee as well, in addition to the historic nature of which many in the community have advocated for, and, and the, the strong work of the Edward Marks Advisory Committee has informed us and, and the town of the importance of the building. We've done historic structures reports on the building, we're, we're following those plans. A few of the considerations, you know, the location of the property, it's near the senior center, it's near multiple other municipal buildings, it's the oldest municipal building in Falmouth, and I think on, on the Cape as well, for that matter. Additionally, over the past few years, through the CPC, you're required to spend at least 10% on three categories, community housing, open space, and historic preservation. Over the past few years, we haven't had the applications for historic preservation to, to even spend all that, that funding, and so we put that into reserves. We saw this and, and see this as an adequate use of those funds to support municipal needs. The municipal needs are to be determined by the administration, and this is an important project for the town and has tremendous support, so we would appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
Joe Neto, Precinct Nine. When I was looking at unspent funds and going back through the budgets with Mr. Schwegel, the Chairman of the FinCom, and I'm the one that held this article, because I was gonna give...
Surprise attack.
And when you look at this building, we have funds for this all over the place. Mr. Schwegel, you have the, I think even the town manager's budget, and we have plenty of money that we have voted for this building. But I got the feeling last night that you didn't wanna hear about all this unspent money that we had, so I didn't pursue it anymore, but I'd already held the article. So Mr. Schwegel will tell you where, and these are unspent funds, funds that we have, you know, appropriated, and as the CPC is telling you, you know, they're, they're supposed to reach a quota. But I think the problem, and Madam Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I don't think there's a town entity that's in charge of this project, and I think that's part of the problem. We have a committee, and Mr. Duffany, it's great to hear that they're working on it, but I just don't think, from my knowledge, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe you can tell me something different or investigate it, that someone in the town, employee, maybe the facilities director, should be in charge of this. Mr. Schwegel, if I may, could you tell town meeting where and how much some of these funds are that we've already voted and appropriated for this one building?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, the history of this project financially started in 1116. We voted $35,000, appropriated $35,000 for a roof. We spent $12,461 for a balance left over right now of roughly $2.300. In November 2018, Article Four, we appropriated $100,000 for human services relocation, this was no construction. In November 2019, you appropriated another $10,000 for human services relocation. In November 2019, you appropriated another $10,000 for human services relocation. By the way, that one I read in November 2018, there's still a balance of $7,614.25 left over. The amount for November 2019 for the relocation of the $10,000, I just told you, that has not been spent yet. In April '22, $119,000 was appropriated for the exterior of the building, which they listed front door trim, entry lighting, portico, repointing, the building foundation, et cetera. That was $119,000. None of that has been spent as of the end of March. There was something I didn't understand, and maybe somebody could explain it. Nick Lowell knows this better than I do. At some point, there was an ESCO money for $114,500 for HVAC upgrades. There was no timestamp on that, on the accounting records. So, we've only spent, for construction to date, that roughly $23,000 on the roof. The rest of the money has not been spent for construction.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to respond to that.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you. So, we have put out a bid and awarded a contract for the renovation of the first floor. These are the renovations that are required to move the Human Services Department into the first floor, and that is going to expend most of that money that was talked about. There is a portion left over from the roof project. The roof was completed, and we just recently closed out that article. So, there is $100,000... There are two... So, all of that money falls under two projects: the interior work for the human services relocation, which is under contract. And there is a second piece that is just a year old. That's the $109,000. That's the exterior work for the parging of the foundation and the repair to the bulkhead. That is going out to bid within the next two weeks.
Mr. Neto.
So, Mr. Staub, is the town manager's office then responsible for the reconstruction of this? Ms. Elliott, who's in charge?
Yes, so the project is under the jurisdiction of the town manager, and it is being overseen by the facilities manager.
Thank you.
Okay. And the balcony, did you want to speak?
I think I'm okay.
You're all set? Okay. Ms. Shepherd?
Susan Shepherd, Precinct 1. I was, as some of you, some of you older people know, involved with Highfield Hall from the beginning and from the beginning of its current beginning. And it was, everyone said, oh, you'll never get town meeting, ever, to... In the end, it was to take it by eminent domain. Not only did we get a 2/3 vote, we got a 75% vote. But the amount of volunteer work that went into that and before it ever got off the ground and we had to do contracting was phenomenal. The same thing has happened a lot at the Eddie Marks House. Mike mentioned the windows. It's unbelievable what's been done to those windows by the most experienced historic carpenter in town. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of back and forth. Some people in the town administration just wanted to convert it into a place that they could move a town department. There was actually a lot of resistance to moving human resources there, because it's right in front of the police station. And there was concern that clients, some of the clients, would not be comfortable going there. Anyway, the building is amazing. I have seen it from top to bottom. There are aspects in it that you wouldn't believe. And I personally think it should just be converted to a, back to a historic building. Let a nonprofit take over. But for heaven's sake, don't tear it down and don't do things to the roof and the exterior that don't meet historic standards. I urge you to pass this.
Okay, Mr. Latimer.
Rich Latimer, Precinct 1. I hope the irony isn't lost on everyone here or anyone. We spent hundreds of thousand dollars to improve what had been the poorhouse. Nonetheless, the building is on the National Historic Register. It should be preserved. If there are some concerns about the foundation, Mike Dufresne says the foundation is basically sound. I'm going to believe him. I'm going to take his word that it's basically sound. Therefore, it can be preserved. I don't often agree with Dan Scherer on many things, but I think his idea of somehow using it as a historic museum or tourist site, it's a good location. It's not downtown where all the, where the green is, where there's no parking. There's plenty of parking right adjacent to it. I think that's something that the town should look in through, maybe through the library and the Historical District Commission, to see if something like that could be worked up. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dufresne, and then Mr. Stone.
Again, for the sake of information, when I outlined this and held this article, I had some serious concerns about what it ultimately would become and at what cost. It's a beautiful building. It's been neglected for too many years. It was on the outskirts of town. Right now, it's in the middle of town. And the eyesore on, as you go by it, it's a disgrace. It's a building that the Town of Falmouth owns that is actually a disgrace. And I go by it and say, what the hell are we doing? And you, they tell me all this money that's been appropriated to clean up the inside, but what is the ultimate use of the building? Are they going to take that white building that was put on as an addition years ago and reconvert that, because now it's not all historical, so we could use that for some purpose? I just have a problem with an investment of $577,000, not a complete picture of what we have spent and what the potential of remodeling that building and for what purpose.
Mr. Stone?
First off, I want to thank Andy again for his tireless dedication. I want to thank you again for your tireless dedication to the town and for all of your work. One thing that I wanted to highlight as well is that every year, we do an annual needs assessment, and this is kind of a plug as well for an upcoming event. We're having our needs assessment in May that our coordinator mentioned at the meeting yesterday. And we use all that input to help inform these very decisions. And we'd like to have your input as well this year, and that goes a long way to everything that we do. So, just wanted to add that as well. Thank you.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's been the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. This time, I'll recognize the Chairman of the Finance Committee to let us know how much money we spent at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This evening, we appropriate, you appropriated $174 million, $174,255,180.32.
Okay. At this time, I'll recognize the Chair of the Select Board for notification of the next annual town meeting. There's no new information?
November 13.
What new information do you have that wasn't available at the time of the original vote? What is the new information that wasn't available at the time of the vote?
We were well aware of, but they may not be. Within the next month, the DEP is going to promulgate regulations which...
Can you speak a little closer? I'm having trouble hearing you.
...which offer the town two options regarding nitrogen removal and wastewater. Option one is, in the next five years, 15,000 people in Falmouth will have to install innovative alternatives boxes in their backyard attached to their septic system, costing in the neighborhood of $30,000 or $40,000 within five years. That's option one. Option two is, within 20 years, the town has to develop plans and implement plans to sewer or otherwise remove the nitrogen from all 14 of its estuaries in 20 years. Both of those options have been fought vigorously by the Town of Falmouth.
Okay.
The best argument we have had...
Okay, Mr. Turkington? I'm going to do two things. Number one, I'm going to say that's not new information that wasn't available, because it was months ago that the DEP announced that. But I'm just going to allow town meeting to take a vote. Do you want to reconsider the article? All those in favor of reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's been the chairs that the noes have it, and the article will not be reconsidered. This time, I'll recognize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen for notification of the next annual town meeting.
The November annual town meeting will be November 13, 2023.
November 13 will be our next annual town meeting. This time, the Chair would entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and this meeting is dissolved.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganech.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim and Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Painting, we believe in providing customers quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Painting, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dogs and Hogs, 781 Main Street, ample parking in the back by our fence.
Lisa Peterson-Azendorf, William Rabus Real Estate Mortgage Insurance, 508-566-6259.
Grassi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
Turning Point Dance Studio, 508-444-0278.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, Sotheby's International Realty, 508-868-0664.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsofNopsga.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. (508) 540-5654.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions.
Wacoit Congregational Church, (508) 548-5269.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, (508) 548-5288.
M. Duffin Builders, (508) 540-3625.
Danny's Barber Shop, (508) 548-6013.
David Rogers Electric, (508) 274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, (1-800) 800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations, (508) 540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, (508) 548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, (508) 548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, (508) 457-5252.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, (508) 457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Windfall, Shaw's Supermarket, Stop &amp; Shop.